Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to staff and council and any constituents watching at home. This is our 2023 proposed operating and capital budgets. And so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, accept the agenda. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, second by Councilor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the special budget meeting of council on Thursday, January the 26th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving, there are no previous minutes. Moving on to delegations, welcome, Mr. Latnemi.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity despite the weather. I spent my first hour and a half snowblowing drifts that were about two feet deep. You picked the day very well.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Kimberly Goyette, who sent me a very detailed 80-page budget document. And I did go over that, and I observed as I went through it, it's the kind of document that can numb the mind and make the eyes glaze over. It had a lot of detail in it. I'll keep my comments simple and focus on only one thing. I'd also like to thank Timothy Wright, who sent me a couple of engineering reports that I looked at. They all also were voluminous and had a lot of technical details, and some of that stuff I'm familiar with, given the work I've done in the past. For the record, I live on McCormick Road on the eastern part between Roland Massey and Wiley, so I have a lot of familiarity with McCormick Road. I use it to go to the bank, to the post office, to the beer store, to get to Highway 34 if I'm going to Maxwell or Ottawa, or Highway 43 if I'm going to Cornwall or thereabouts. Some people use that road every day to go to work, and others who live along it use it to go to town to shop, to get professional services, or to visit, et cetera. I've lived there since 2006. About a year or two after, on Father's Day, my daughter and her three little, they were little ones at the time, came out to surprise me. And when my daughter got to the house, she was ashen. She was really shaken up. I said, what happened? She says, I almost had head-on collision. She says, coming over that hill halfway between here and the, and the road. It would have made it a very tragic Father's Day. Fortunately, she was able to get to the side on the shoulder, which is something I do quite regularly on that hill, and got to her house safely. There's already been one fatality on that hill that I'm aware of, and the official reasons were excessive speed and impairment. But there's a reason why that accident happened on that hill and not half a kilometer before it or half a kilometer after it. And the reason is that that hill is dangerous. I don't think you need any more evidence than the fact that there's been an accident there that took lives and hurt people. I've often had to swerve onto the shoulder, going both east and west on that hill, when oncoming traffic tries to avoid the bumps, et cetera, and doesn't know that somebody's coming from the other direction. I've spoken to neighbors, and many others have had similar experiences. If there was any canvassing of residents on McCormick Road, I think there'd be a unanimous comment that that hill needs fixing. I looked at the 2021 Roads Need Study very carefully when it came out. It presented a 10-year plan. And in the first, in 2021, part of McCormick Road was done, the part called Power Dam Road, which was in reasonably good condition compared to the rest of it. That plan showed major improvements and budgeted for major improvements to McCormick Road from Cuthbert east to 23 for 2023, the year 2023, this year. I wrote to the mayor, Jamie, in December of '21, and suggested they move it forward. I also wrote to the council in January 2022 to ask whether they could move that particular piece of work forward. I don't think it'd do anybody good to have another accident there. I was informed that McCormick Road east of Cuthbertson, or Cuthbert, rather, would be done this year, in 2023. Okay, I took that at face value. I was very hopeful that that would happen. Then I saw the item in the Glengarry News about the Public Works Strategy for Responsible Road Infrastructure, Staff Report PW 2022-28. I became extremely concerned. That document did not show major improvements to McCormick Road this year. Instead, it proposed petitioning the counties to take over McCormick Road. With respect, I think that represents a pass the buck, and it comes with a very high cost, $465,300 out of the 2023 budget to push that proposition forward. And it might include taking over a county road with a low traffic count, might. The report also indicated that the employee, an employee of the counties was open to investigating the possibility. In that same Glengarry News, I noticed that the counties have already approved their four-year $48 million roads plan. With respect again, I believe the strategy represents a stall, to delay instead of fixing a dangerous situation. I have some observations for council perhaps to keep in mind. There already are three county roads going east and west in that part of the township. The Glen Road, County Road 10, which is south of McCormick Road, connects Glen Robertson to Alexandria. County Road 21, which is north of McCormick Road, connects Glen Sandfield and Laheal to Highway 34. And farther north, County Road 24 collects Del Key to Highway 34 and Dunvegan. Big difference is that there's no community at the east end of McCormick Road. It connects County Road 23 to Highway 34 at the north end of Alexandria. It serves agricultural properties and a fairly small number of rural residents. There's less than 50 mailboxes on the stretch from Cuthbert to 23. I counted them the other day. More than half of them are farm properties or wood lots. The traffic volumes on that road are variable by season. It's a farm road. When the harvest is on, there's a lot of traffic. In the wintertime, there's less traffic. It also varies by location. Willett Road and Wiley Road both feed a little bit of traffic into McCormick Road, not, not a lot, but a bit. I live in the east end between Wiley and Roland Massey, and I can count maybe five or 10 cars a day that go up Wiley, except when business is open. The other thing that I noticed last summer was that the volume was higher, and that probably was because of bridge repair being done on the Glen Road. Many people who live in Glen Robertson found that it was convenient to go to the north end of Alexandria to cut over and take McCormick, and also they didn't have to wait at the lights or take a detour south of the Glen Road. The 2021 Roads Need Report emphasized the responsibility and duty of care for having safe infrastructure. I have to raise some questions. I have to wonder, why did we pay for that roads need study if we're just going to ignore the findings and recommendations? What has changed? With regard to the new public works strategy, what is the probability of success in petitioning the counties? Does anybody know? When is that expected to happen? How long will it take? What works are expected to be done on McCormick Road if that happens, and when? What are the levels of needs and urgency of the various things on the table, and who is going to benefit from each of them? I found that that document lacked much detail. There's much uncertainty, but there is one thing that's certain: trying to shift the responsibility to the counties will not fix anything on McCormick Road in the near term. A dangerous unattended situation will persist. For people who live in the rural areas, safe roads are the main thing they get out of their budget. We do get garbage collection. We have fire service, thank God. But we don't get our sidewalks cleared. There's no sidewalks along those roads. We pay for own well water and our septic systems. We don't get street lighting. And I have to wonder, are rural residents not as important as townies? It's an open question, and over happy hours, et cetera, we've had that discussion, with the short end of the stick goes to the rural people.
Mr. Latnemi, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. You're supposed to only have five minutes, so...
I will. Let me say quickly, I don't want to see nothing being done after a serious, until after a serious accident happens. I don't want my friends and neighbors to get hurt there. I surely don't want my children or grandchildren or my wife to be involved in an accident, and I don't want to get maimed or killed because of a dangerous township road. The fact that improving McCormick Road is a big-ticket project reflects its importance and its urgency, so I urge council to proceed with the major improvements in McCormick Road in 2023 that the 10-year plan identified. Negotiating can be delayed without serious consequences. There's no urgency. Fixing a dangerous situation can't be put off without taking serious risk. In the event it's absolutely essential for the budget to be trimmed at the barest minimum, do fix a dangerous hill between Cuthbert and Massey Dale in 2023, to at least partially fulfill the priority identified in the 10-year plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, and I'd just like to make a few comments first. I take great offense with saying that the rural residents don't receive their fair share. We, the biggest portion of our budgets for roads go to the rural areas. There are more bridges, there's culverts, there's gravel roads. More money is spent there than is in the town of Alexandria or in the village of Maxwell on their road, so just wanted to make that quick point. Talking about a county road and saying that making it a county road is just passing the buck, it's not. It's about traffic volumes. It has high traffic volumes. I'm going to let Tim speak to this quickly in a second, and I just think that the counties, to say that the counties are going to take over a road and just leave it, doesn't work that way. And we have had discussions at the counties at this point. They are doing a, they are doing a study right now on this very subject, on which roads that they should probably take over, and, and which roads should become a township road, and that's what we're saying about 21 should probably be a township road, and McCormick should be a county road. So I'm going to pass it over to Tim for a few statistics.
Thank you. So I won't, I won't go too much into detail, just to say, one of the major questions you asked was what has changed. So the second report that I sent you earlier this week is on our geotechnical investigation, and we are concerned, at the end of the report specifically on McCormick Road, our concern is when we flatten and pave a road, it encourages faster speed. So cutting that hill, paving that road to a brand-new surface, this encourages drivers to go faster, so this is one of our major concerns, especially with the road, the road allowance that we have from McCormick. So I encourage you to, like, that is the main thing that has changed, and we are certain with the geotechnical investigations that we did, that if we do pave that road with the treatment that was recommended in the Roads Need Study, and if you read the Roads Need Study, it says further investigations, including geotechnical, are recommended before we proceed, that that road surface, one that was recommended, will fail within five years. And the study that was done by the same firm on the next year is to add six inches of granular, which adds another $800,000 to that, that budget minimum. If we do four inches, more likely $1.2 million. So that takes that, that road well beyond, like, it basically doubles the public works budget, so we can't afford to do that in one year. The counties can, and because of the, because of the, because of the road allowance there and the traffic volumes that we see, the safest way for that road to go is to actually turn into a county road, have a wider allowance, have the proper clear zone so no one's going to hit a obstacle at speed, and that we have the room to put the proper safety precautions in place. And I'd encourage you to take up my offer, come and meet with me, and I can go through that report in detail, but I assure you that we're, we're not ignoring that road at all.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Yep, go ahead.
Turn the mic on, please. The last point that I made was that one can take a look at part of McCormick Road, the most dangerous part, and deal with that as an item while the other things go on. To try to use the total cost of the road to a county road standard as a reason, to me, doesn't wash. And I might say that I've been involved in reviewing capital projects on a national level, and I have real doubts that there's only one option here. The option I'm recommending is fix that hill this year while the negotiations go on. That is the urgent issue.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of council? Go ahead, Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would really strongly recommend that you meet with Tim. I spent some time with him, a considerable amount of time talking about this whole project, and, and there's a lot to learn about what's going on, how they can proceed, the best way to proceed, the options and the quality of, of road they can build, and, you know, I went in with, you know, thinking about your concerns and come away thinking that we're in good hands. That's the way I feel about it, but, and if you spoke with Tim at length, I'm sure you, you would see some things that maybe would make you consider this path acceptable.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cadell. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Okay, moving on to the budget. Welcome, Kim. Take it over.
Good morning. Today, we're going to look at the proposed operating and capital budgets for 2023. Basically, the overview is, we'll be going through the department budgets, basically a summary of what's going on in the various areas, and then we will move on to the operating budget. You'll notice the heart-shaped money there. Okay, so department directors will be presenting their own sections of the budget. It's basic overview and then capital, and then we will move on to operating. In the operating budget, we will go by department, and council will be able to choose which line item they want to discuss further. The goal is to compile an agreed-upon list of adjustments or changes, or additional information that council may wish, and then bring it forward to the January 30 regular council meeting with the hopes of approving the 2023 budget. An operating budget is a comprehensive list of estimates and revenues for day-to-day operations. It's used within the year. Capital budget is more comprehensive. It's for large items that are over, that have a life cycle of over one year, for buildings, automobiles, things like that. For this year, the proposed tax rate increase is 3.17% for a total of $6,580, sorry, $6,581.87. This is an increase of $254,000 over 2022, based on an average assessment of $244,000 for the average assessment in North Glengarry. This increase would equate to about $41 annually. County rates have not been set. Their budget meeting, I believe, is February 15. The education rates have been set. They're not changing from last year, so that won't attack, won't affect the tax rate. There's a 2% increase has been included for water and wastewater, and the actual figures on the operating side are as of December 8. So they are not the year-end amounts, but they were the best estimates for trying to get this budget document to council. Key assumptions for this budget: 2% cost of living has been used for non-unionized staff. Other staff are governed by their collective agreements. Salary step increases and changes in staffing have impacted the budget. The minimum wage has increased to $1,550 per hour, and part-time staff have now been given the option to join Omer's. That has a minimal effect on the budget. Benefit rates are estimated to increase by 4.3%, CPP by 4%, and EI has increased to, from $1.58 per $100 to 1.63. Insurance rates are estimated to be increasing by 20%. Items that were deferred or not being able to complete were transferred to reserves in December, so that gives us those funds to be used in 2023 to complete those items. There's a continued freeze in assessment, which has only resulted in a $53,000 rough increase in, in tax dollars. On average, we used to get around 300 to 305, sorry, $350,000, so that would equal about a 5% tax amount. So it's quite a decrease for us, having that freeze on. A 1% tax increase equates to roughly $65,000 or $66,000. Transfers from reserves of approximately $955,000 have been included in this budget to keep the tax rate as low as we can. There is a continual challenge of availability of goods and services and contractors. A lot of our automobiles are taking over a year to get here, and there's a continued challenge with increases for the cost of services and fuel. The township is a lower-tier municipality. Total tax rate is made up of a municipal portion, a county portion, and an education portion. Like I said before, municipal tax rate increase is proposed at 3.17%. So taxes are calculated by multiplying the assessment value by the total tax rate, by property class. There are different classes of taxes. The, the main one is residential. It's considered the 100% rate, but then you look at farmland property, it is 25% of that rate, and then you can look at commercial, which is about 1.6, sorry, 163% of the rate. So the way, that creates a weighted assessment, so basically taxes are, are calculated by taking the total amount required to run the municipality by the weighted assessment to get the tax rates for the various classes. Of the total tax rate, approximately 40% is municipal, 44% is county, and 16 is education. It needs to be noted that the county and education, regardless of what taxes we collect, their portions have to be paid in full. So whatever we don't collect in taxes, whatever arrears we don't collect hits our bottom line, not theirs. Tax rate is subject to change based on what the county is going to move forward to, so you will have a tax bylaw coming after they have set their rates. Things to consider for the capital budget: the project requirements, strategic council priority alignment, the value to citizens, and the operating budget impact. So for example, if in capital you decide that we're going to buy an additional truck, it will have an operational impact because you might need the resources to run that truck, and you might need fuel costs and things like that, so they are directly related. The 10-year capital plan has been updated to indicate planned future spending based on studies or age of facilities or fleet. The, and the asset management plan is a guide. If you read the asset management plan, you'll see that the average requirement is about $22 million a year in capital, which is not feasible for our budget, so our capital budget is trimmed to meet reality and what we can afford. This is just a graph showing historical capital spending, tax-based only. Water and sewer is a self-sustaining entity, so it's basically a user fees, so those who are on water and sewer pay for the water and sewer. As you can see here, there seems to be a big increase in 2021 and 2022. 2021 was the Creek Road Bridge Project, and in 2022, we had the Glengarry Sports Palace, but those were funded by grants, so although the spending looks high, they were offset with grant funding. Historical debt levels. The big hit in 2018 obviously was Maxwell, and it will continue for 30 years. I do want to bring to your attention that in 2022, as part of this budget, that $9.7 million amount does include the funding of those two tandem trucks in the budget, although the report that was brought to council was deferred for funding. It has been included in this budget, so that could come down. But I want you to note that in this budget, there was three different current loans we had. One was for landfill land, one was for the rare plant, and one was for bridge repairs, and they have all expired in 2023, early 2023, late 2022. So that freed up $91,000 in long-term debt payments. So included in this budget was the 68, or sorry, $64,000 for those tandems, but overall, we're still paying less in, in fees than we were in 2022. As far as the debt levels, we have an annual repayment limit set by municipal affairs and housing, and we're well within those limits. In fact, at this point in time, they're saying at, if we amortize over 15 years, the, at a 5% interest rate, we could afford to spend $18 million, so we're well within our limits.
Let's get our, sharpen our pencils.
Well, even, even at 7% for 15 years, there's, there's room for $16 million, so we're well within our limits. This is the 10-year historical reserve levels, just to, to show you where we're at. The $7.3 million basically reflects unspent capital that was returned to reserves in 2022, but is earmarked for transferring out in 2023 to help fund some of our items. Of that 7.3, it should be noted that approximately $3 million is for water and sewer, so, and that's specifically for that department, and for the waste disposal site, it's about $1 million. The, the rest is, we have about discretionary reserves, which are those that have been set aside for specific projects, is about $2 million, so really, our working reserves are about $1 million of, of that 7.3. This slide is just showing you the total proposed budget summary. It goes on for two pages, just so you could try to read it, but it is in your documents. Overall, we're looking, 2023 proposed is 6.580187. It's on the far right-hand side at the bottom, compared to the 2022 budget, which was 6.3 million roughly, so the difference, as I said earlier, is about $254,000. This slide here is just showing proposed total budget by function, and as you can see, it does include capital and operating in this total, so it's overall budget, and as you can see, Public Works takes the share at 43%, followed by administration, and then fire and recreation. Way above. This is a summary of the capital budget. The total for 2023 is estimated $7.3 million. As I said earlier, the asset management plan is averaging about $22 million a year, which we cannot afford, so these are more realistic figures of what we can afford, based on what we have available. This is showing proposed capital budget by area. As you can see, fleet is one of our biggest concerns at 39%. Our vehicles are aging and costing us a lot for repairs and maintenance, and then the roads department. So that's the brief summary. I'm now going to go into, I'll present for Governance, Governance and General Administration.
So just, what we're going to be doing is, she's going to do the overview, we'll look at, and then we'll do each, each page by page in that department, and, you know, we'll take our time when we get to it, take, you know, three to five minutes to relook at that page, and then if there are any questions or changes, then we can bring them up.
At the end of every section, or...
At the end of every page. I'll, I'll call out the page, and you'll look at it. I'll call out the page, and you'll look at it.
Okay. Just on the, I had a few stuff here on the long-term debt page.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This is an overview of the capital and the departments. I think you're talking about the operating.
Yeah, when we get into the operating.
The operating budgets after all these presentations, because it'll be much longer. Okay, sorry.
Did you have a question on long-term debt?
Yes. Okay, so I identified a few places, like a few loans that are getting really low on the, on this page. And like, sorry, page 11. Ones that we could take out of reserve, because I checked the reserve on the previous pages that we have room for.
I would have to, I can get back to you on that, Councilor Massey. I do have all the dates, and some of these are going to be paid in full in like 2024, 2025.
No, no, I know, but I only have a few. There's two of them that I identified.
Okay, which two?
That we could get rid of the annual.
Okay, which ones are they?
Okay. In the Water Works Department, the water tower in the scada.
What page are you on?
11. So there's 64,629 there?
Okay.
Does this annual payment for, that affects the budget, eh?
Pardon me?
The annual payment for the debt affect the budget, that's in the budget?
Water Works? This is all in.
Overall, the debt.
It's all in the budget.
Okay. So Water Works, the water tower in the scada, which was taken March 1st, 2012, there's $64,000 there that, in the proposed budget, that we have to repay. So if we take that out of reserve, which we have a lot of room?
But that doesn't affect the tax base at all, because it's water.
No, no, I know, but it, yeah, but we could.
The only difference is, I think though, Jacques is, and I like playing off those small ones, but, you know, the interest rate's at 2.56%.
Yeah. Okay, so let's go then to the Water Works.
Sorry, go ahead. You had something?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the other consideration, Councilor Massey, is it's a long-term debt, right? So we can't pay it off earlier. There would be a penalty more than likely to do that, especially at the end of the term. So unless it's at like a renewal point, it wouldn't be worthwhile for us to consider that, unfortunately.
And these ones that you're talking about at the top are from Infrastructure Ontario, so it's even dicier to try to get out of them.
We can't repay a loan from Infrastructure?
You'd be penalized.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, okay.
It's just like if you pay your mortgage off early before the term.
Yeah, but you would think that the government is trying to help the municipalities instead.
That's a good one. That's a good one.
No, but I think we're all working together here, but that's okay.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the loans, it was amortized over two, it was amortized over 20 years with two 10-year terms. And the 10-year term was up, and I think we owed $54,000, and it was paid out. I'm not renewing the $54,000 loan.
Anything further, Councilor Massey? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, Governance and General Administration. Administration Department includes the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer, or CAO, the Clerks Department, the Treasury Department, and IT. The CAO is responsible for effective administration of all township activities, including policies, human resources, liaises with boards, agencies, strategic planning, et cetera. The Clerks Department is a function of the CAO with assistance from deputy clerks and is responsible for legislative guidelines to council and conducting of council and committee meetings, which includes the agendas, bylaws, agreements, commissioner votes, records retentions, and death and marriage registrations. IT, information technology, manages software and hardware pertaining to the township, liaises with the county for, like our financial system is based in the county, and phones, phone systems and cell phones. Treasury Department handles all affairs of the township in accordance with the Municipal Act, generally accepted accounting practices, bylaws, policies, accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, all the financial functions. In this area, we also have other services, because it includes things that we don't know where to really put them, including the crossing guards, ambulance, transfer funds to the conservation authorities, and livestock grants and evaluations. There are several grants to assist with funding of the 2023 budget. One of the biggest one is the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, or OMPF. It's been confirmed at just over $2.2 million, which is an increase of 147 from last year. This fund supports primarily northern and rural communities, and those areas that have limited assessment. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, or OSIF, is just over $562,000 with an increase of $73,000 over 2022. It's for small northern and rural communities with less than 100,000 people, and its goal is to maintain, for maintenance and renewal of core infrastructure according to your asset management plan. So that was the, their legislated asset management plan is directly linked to this funding. So those communities that did not provide their asset management fund, this was going to be held back, so. The Canada Community Building Fund, CCBF, seems new to the councillors who've been here for some time. This was the gas tax. They changed the name. It's an increase of just over $14,000 over 2022, and it provides stable funding for infrastructure, water, wastewater, bridges, roads, recreation, fire halls. The total this year was 334,000. So that was great. And then you have payments in lieu of taxes. These are calculated exactly the same as taxes, however, they're for Crown corporations, and it's the discretion of the Crown to pay what they want. So currently, we have, we get about 80,000, sorry, about 80% of this. They're not huge. In North Glengarry, it equates to about $142,000 in tax dollars. And then, again, one of our challenges is the contractor costs and availability of products. High inflation is not helping, and world economies are not helping, so it's a challenge.
Kim, just a question on the payments in lieu. When you're budgeting, do you budget?
The full amount.
The full amount, not the 80%?
Mm-mm. And like, even this year, we did, we got overpayment, because they paid us in January for 2021, and then we had the 2022 amount. So you never really know what you're going to get. It's like a box of chocolates. This is the third year of the assessment freeze. As I've said, we usually get about $350,000. There is no, I've heard nothing about when they're going to unfreeze it and how they're going to do it. I have no idea, and MPAC has no idea. So hopefully, we get out of this freeze soon, and we get some additional revenues. So the main proposed budget includes continued policy work, personnel policy update, code of contact, there's a debt management policy coming forward, and revising some of our older policies, such as the IT policy. The update of the strategic plan, I believe the meetings are scheduled for March to start that process. Digitization and records management project, there's going to be an RFP going out for this. No, sorry. And then computer replacements and upgrades, those are in the budget every year, because every year, something needs to be replaced. And then we're going to continue to focus on aggressive tax collection. We have a property coming available in March. So here's just an overview of the proposed capital budget. It's just the computer replacement and upgrades of $20,000, and the records management software at $100,000. The $100,000 is funded from reserves, and the $20,000 is hitting the tax base.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Kim, I'm just going back a few pages here before you get too far into this. I'm looking at the total budget summary. So it's all of the services, it's page 13. There are a lot of variances, significant variances on this page that I don't understand. And so my question is, is as we go through each department, are we actually, are some of my questions going to be able to be answered, you know, in the rest of this document? Because there are just some numbers here that I just don't make any sense to me. It's page 13.
Yes. It will be, well, capital, you can see the, the capital will, you can just, you know, ask questions right now about. When you get to operating, you'll see more of the differences that occur. We've had some staffing changes. There's been changes in like insurance and things like that. Also, some of the variances are occurring because I increased fuel in a lot of places to make it more realistic. So I think you're going to see it more in the operating rather than the capital side of things.
Yeah, well, exactly, except it may not be obvious. Like, it really stands out on this document, whereas I think it's.
You'll see, you'll see it mostly in operating. Capital does vary somewhat, but I think you're going to see it more in the operating side.
Right. But for example, I'm looking at Administration here, where the 2022 budget was 1.8 million. Then the actuals show at 2.4 million. And then the proposed, down to 1.4.
You'll see it in operating, and I'll tell you what that one is right now, is we sold a piece of land, and we sold a building.
Okay, okay.
And that's where you'll see it in operating, because you'll see there'll be excessive revenues showing up.
All right. Well, I don't know, but have you looked at this? I personally, I'd like to go through it.
I can't, there's so much detail behind that.
Yeah, you won't be able to go through, like, you'll be able to, that's why we go through the, we actually go through each budget.
Okay, all right.
You'll see it in operating more than you will in capital right now.
Right.
So this, the detail behind this, this is a, like.
Yeah, okay, right.
I couldn't give you total details, but you'll see it more in operating.
Well, yeah, because I don't know whether I'll get to, to be able, ask this question under machinery and equipment, where there's nothing in 2020, 2021, and then $187,000 in the proposed budget.
Because we changed, that one I can explain as well. We changed this to make it more in line with the asset management plan, which has fleet by itself and machinery equipment, and we didn't separate them in previous years.
Okay, so that'll clarify as we go through it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Kim, the records management software, so that's, that's a software that costs $100,000?
It's software, and we're also scanning our documentation to try to get rid of excessive amounts of papers.
Okay.
And we have, like, right now, if you take a look, everybody seems to have their own way of filing things.
Okay.
And we, and they're not shared.
Okay.
So it's going to make it a comprehensive, consistent way of managing our records. Not only that, it has an automated retention plan attached to it, so when we don't need that file, it gets moved to archive, so it doesn't take up room.
Okay, so we did shop around, that's the same thing for every software and.
Go ahead.
Councilor Massey, I brought a report to council in the fall, like a detailed report, and it's funded through the modernization money.
Oh, okay, okay. So on this same page here, I see the draw, like the funding sources for that, those two projects, the computer upgrades and the software. There's $20,000 from the tax base there?
Yes.
So I looked up the North Glengarry General Fund, there's lots of room there. We could take it there, and that would save $20,000 on the operating budget?
Go ahead.
So Councilor Massey, you'll see where we're trying to replace our computers year over year over year. So we'd like to consistently budget $20,000 per year, so we can replace all the computers. That's why you'll see it in the tax base. The issue with taking it out of the reserve would be that we would have to continue to do that year over year. So I don't disagree that we have money in our general fund. However, we were trying to do capital through the tax base as much as we can, consistently over the years. So that's all the computers for like the entire township to replace.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just that I thought maybe if we do have lots of room in one department, which is, just a question.
Councilor Massey, also, what's to be considered with the general fund that you're talking about, the reserves? That also is available for us to use in case we have a year when there's a deficit. So if at the end of the year, we have a deficit of $200,000, it comes out of that reserve. So to, it's not kind of wise to try to deplete that reserve when you have a constant $20,000
Any further questions or comments at this point? Okay, continue.
I'm going to pass it on now to bylaw, building bylaw, and.
Yeah, this, is it not Governance? I have the.
Governance, and then there's Governance.
The council is, page 17 is the council budget.
We're doing that after this review, Jamie?
No.
So if you look at the agenda, it says proposed summaries and capital budgets, and then item number 10 under the budget says review of operating budgets, all departments.
Okay, so.
It's too hard, so this is a PowerPoint presentation, and the other thing is Excel based, and it's too hard to flip back and forth. So this is just the capital of major items that the, sorry.
That major items that the department is planning on doing. Then we're going to do the operating line by line by line, and, because there's no way to, it's too hard logistically to keep flipping back and forth.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
So this is all this up until number 10 is just on capital.
Capital and a basic overview from the departments.
Okay, just in the future, just, I'd like to see the package match what we're looking up, up there, so. Okay, thank you. Keep going. Good?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, by the way, our department name is now the 2.4% department, just so everyone knows. So what we cover is building department. So as you all know, Ontario Building Code, we deal with building permits, demolition permits, everything that goes with that, so meeting with residents, meeting with contractors, any development that happens basically in the township. So that's the building aspect of it. Then there's bylaw, which kind of matches into building. So there's property standards. We will deal with existing houses, existing buildings that have issues. The bylaw will also cover stuff like parking, animal control, clean yards, which are probably our three biggest issue here in the township for bylaw. And then we will do departments also in charge of planning stuff. So everything that deals with the Planning Act, you've got the zoning bylaw amendments, minor variances, everything like that. Septic systems, which is right into the Ontario Building Code as well. So we, the way we do it here in North Glengarry, we do it in-house, so all the permits are issued by North Glengarry for septic systems. And the animal services, so that's pretty much, it goes with bylaw. Again, our, probably our, the largest issue we have with bylaw is dog control. So we also now, we are also now dealing with animal services in-house. So our bylaw officer does the dog control himself here at the township. Just a little overview of our department. Decrease in salaries and benefits. Don't worry, it's not my salary that's being decreased. We have moved things around, as you know. We could not hire a planner. So what we have done is we have moved one of our admin assistants to specifically planning, and we have hired another admin assistant. So it basically ends up being a salary decrease from a planner to an admin assistant. Just to reassure council, things are working really well that way. The caries with Peter Young and Megan and Stephanie, basically, it's, they are helping us a lot. It's working really well up to now for this. So older performance deposits, as you know, since 2016, the township has been asking some performance deposit for every building permit that's being issued. We were working on closing old permits, so we have started back in 2015. I think we have closed a lot of outstanding building permits. What we now see is that there are less and less open. What we now see is that there are less and less open building permits with the deposit, so even just a hundred dollars, people want it back, so they do call us to finalize the permit, so that helps a lot. It helps for for us, because like every building permit that's outstanding after so many years, we do make some some money because we keep some money. It also helps the people though, because the ones that have outstanding building permits that they they did not know, because we keep the deposit, we do not ask them for any reopening of the permit, something like that, so it ends up being easier for them to just to have that permit outstanding, just lose the money for the deposit, and we just close the permit as we go. These things usually show up when they want to sell their property, so it's it's usually a rush, so it it works well for that. Most of the townships around also have that now. Uh, bylaw will again focus on set fine charges, we will send especially our clean yards one. We, as you know, we're not strong on fines, we don't like to issue fines because we, like me and the bylaw officer, fines don't resolve anything, they just, it's just two hundred dollars, you give it back and the problem is still there, so we we do use set fines for some stuff, especially for like parking, but for everything else, we try to work our way around fines. Uh, but they're still good to have, it's a good tool for us to have. Animal control, this also, our bylaw officer, still working on that. Um, so loose dogs now, we do take them in ourselves, and we we have a program where if it's, if the dog is not claimed, we can try to rehome it, find someone else to to get the dog. Up to now, we have only had, I think, two or three dogs where we have to keep for more than a week, so all the other dogs are gone before. Usually the owner comes and claims it back, so uh, before they had to go and get their dog back near Morrisburg, so now it's right here in Alexandria for the township, so this is for for us anyway, I think it's also a very good thing. Uh, sign bylaw, so I think I've had that there since I, since I started working for North Glengarry. Uh, I'm proud to announce though that I have started my my sign bylaw review, I I'm comparing it basically with other townships around. The ones that do have a sign bylaw, because some of them, they don't even have a sign bylaw, especially now uh, that the counties are really starting to enforce signs on county roads, so there's most of the of the big roads where people do want some signs are on county roads, so the the counties do issue a permit where the the township, it's a somewhat a bit of a complicated process. Township has to review the application for its intent to the counties, then the counties review it, they issue their permit. And here in North Glengarry, because we also have a sign bylaw, they have to come back to us to issue the actual signed permit, so there's a lot of back and forth, and I think that's why some other township just said, just go to the counties and don't bother us with that. It it is a good thing to have, especially for other roads where, um, so the the biggest thing that helps here is mostly for when it comes to roads for side triangles and stuff like that, so we're, we're, we're usually on site with the owner to to see where the sign will be and to make sure that it isn't obstructive view or anything, so other bylaws, other sign bylaws around that I've seen are are less strict than ours, so at the end of the day, I think ours is good. I think the major issue was really for properties that have a lot of signs on them, a lot of commercial signs on them, so that's some, maybe one thing we're going to try to address, but these signs were probably put there before this current bylaw was enforced, so we will check that out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just with regards to commercial signs, I think it'll be a good idea to look at our CIP uh, for the signage guidelines that are in there, I realize that that's related to a grant program, and but there are some good guidelines there in terms of maintaining proper aesthetics um, for signage to improve, you know, it's a beautification issue, I just wanted to mention it, it's probably worth, you know, looking at the guidelines that are set up in the CIP.
Great, thank you, and if, just like these commercial signs, if they would be applied for now, you're only allowed one per property, unless you have a very white property, but so these signs were put there a while back, and that's probably why they're still there. Uh, yeah, so streamlining SEG for planning applications. Uh, the counties and I think three townships went with a cloud permit for planning process, I think it's called cloud permit, anyway, it's an, it's, it's, yeah. It's an online program where people apply basically online for, and then all the the follow-ups are done through that, through that program, through that software. Uh, we decided not, like in North Glengarry here, we're not going to go with that software. Uh, it costs a lot of money, and for the amount of application, applications that we have here, it's not really worth it because it, there's, there's just me and shot that basically thing with the file, so we don't need to like have a tracking system of who did what, so we're just going to keep doing as we do now, but the the counties do have that software, so uh, you may see some some information, stuff like that, there are some emails being being sent from that software. It works well, it's just a question of getting used to it. Uh, subdivision standards guidelines, so uh, Tim and I have met with all the other townships regarding this, it's a it's a new guideline for site plans and for subdivisions, so it's going to include site plan as well. Uh, it's, it will have all the information that we'll need for our new subdivision, so as you know, we don't have anything here, we use we use what standard in surrounding townships, but now the 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 counties are are working on making one that's that's the same throughout the the township of SENG, so it's going to be easier, I guess, for developers to to develop subdivisions. Uh, review of the township's zoning bylaw, again, here, working with the counties. Um, Peter Young, we're, all the, all the planners are meeting together. Uh, he had asked if if all the townships would like to have a zoning bylaw that it's common or the same to all townships? Or if it would be like the part the same, like all the definitions would be the same? Uh, and and that all the zones would be like different to all the townships, and that's kind of the answer that he got, where most of the townships want to keep their their zone name, like R one, R two, or three, or four, like we have uh, some townships around, they don't work like that, they have only like three densities, or they're called something else, so all the townships, we're going to keep our same, like the same name for our for our zones, but the bylaw will be reviewed to include stuff like a uh, it will probably, what we'll have to include secondary dwellings and stuff like that, so everything that's being brought up by the Planning Act will have to include it in our new zoning bylaw that we don't have right now. Uh, and then the official plan, uh, as you know, it it finally passed, North Glengarry has no outstanding issues at the tribunal. Uh, the the issue, it's not really an issue, but the the thing we're seeing now is that some residents now have a property that's in the official plan designated as rural, but our zoning bylaw, because it's it's older, it doesn't match, so uh, we we kind of have to 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 figure that out as we go, so it's just a little bit more complicated for us as as far as as the designation goes, but from what we're, from what we were told is that if the official plan designated designation changed, our new zoning bylaw is going to address that when we review, so we have to consider it as whatever the official plan says. Uh, the Ontario Building Code, there's going to be a new building code, probably issued in twenty twenty-four. So apparently it's going to have some some changes, some some big changes, especially when it comes to stairs and stuff like that, but uh, this will only come later. And then challenge presented by Bill twenty-three, we're going to have a, in the presentation by Peter Young, Monday at council meeting. Uh, it's, it's not going to affect, I guess, North Glengarry a lot, especially for sorry, not especially, but exceptionally for like monies where like site plans are no longer needed for, so for, I think, up to twelve units and development charges and stuff like that, but aside from that, and for our department, uh, what's, what deals with Bill twenty-three doesn't affect the lower tier municipality as much as as it would in Ottawa or Toronto, for example. And I think, yeah, there you go, no capital budget, so I was told by Kim that because we're only two for, two point four percent of the value, I only have two percent, two point four percent of the time, so I'm done.
So basically, you wasted our entire time to tell us that you have no capital budget requests?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Perfect questions, go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Jacob, in your, in the report on challenges, you had mentioned about the clearcutting bylaw, and both the, there was two permits issued this past year, and four more landowners inquiring, just wondering if we could get more, an update more often on on that going forward? I think it would be beneficial for for council to know what what's going on out there as far as.
I think maybe that should be part of the Rural Committee package, and then once it'll come to our.
It'll come to our, yeah, that's a good idea.
So I think it'll, I think that'd be a way that we could.
Okay.
I I can comment now though, if you want, so that the, most of the time what we have is the the questions, so it's usually the farmers that that ask us questions. The the four, I guess, that inquired were the ones that already had started before the bylaw passed, so they were worried that we were going to sue them, whatever, but we said no if if the work has already started, and it's like the two of them, we asked for proof that the project was already started, so they provided, they provided us with invoice from their contractor, and it has started prior to. The two that we issued don't, they haven't started yet, and they're very small projects, so one of them, I think, it's seven acres, and the other one was thirty acres. Uh, nowhere near any potential issues, so uh, we're getting calls here and there, Todd or I, we go, we just check to make sure, but up to now, everything is, well, yeah. I think when the conversation started about that, all the farmers that had that in mind to clearcut, they did it all right away, they started right now, like before the bylaw passed, so I guess we're seeing kind of a little decline in those, but should start, we'll, I'll update that though, yeah.
Okay, thank you, any further questions for Jacob? Seeing none, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Moving on. Here we go, welcome in.
Two point four percent, but you couldn't move your slides forward. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm really pleased to be speaking to you about all of the budgets that fall under community services. So I'm going to start with the community services portion of it, and really, this budget covers the township's support to community activities such as Canada Day, the Santa Claus Parade, and township committee support. It also contains contributions to different organizations in the township to support the community halls and costs associated to the libraries. Uh, the budgets are really aligned with those of previous years, and I will and staff will continue to support the communities, volunteer organizations, and events. I just wanted to share with you one of the stories, so I think these highlight the successes of everything that happens when it comes to community services and working for the community. One of the really important things that we do is ensure accessibility to our facilities, and this summer, through one of the councillors, we got a call about Island Park soccer fields themselves not being accessible to a younger member of our community, which was in a wheelchair. So we got that call on a weekend, or that note on a weekend, and during that week, we were able to collaborate with the Public Works Department to remove the boulders and that access to the soccer fields at Island Park from Park Avenue, and we were able to remove the berm that was there, um, put some stone dust, have it compacted, and then install three handicap spaces off of Park Street. And this now allows anyone in the community to be able to step foot on our fields. So this cost no money to do, and these are ways that we always look at trying to improve accessibility across the township. And thank you to that community member that brought that forward, and thank you to Public Works for really helping out the Recreation Department to be able to ensure that these installations do work for everyone. For the operating budget, I'm just going to touch upon it quickly because that way we won't have to really go into an intro at that time. We support the municipal recreation associations, we give them operating funds, those funds have remained the same as long as I've been here, and that's I'm on my seventh budget with the municipality, it's at eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for ten associations. Those associations combined manage four halls, six soccer installations that have full-size fields, micros and minis, three ball fields, two outdoor rinks, and four playgrounds, so that eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars goes a long way. This really helps the municipality to be able to continue to offer these amenities out in many rural communities. In regards to capital budget, you'll see that our ask remains at sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars. The amount noted below is one hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, but of that, you'll note that thirty thousand dollars was already approved through the twenty twenty-two capital budget, and that was for the Dalkeith skating rink. Yes, I am, oh, sorry, my apologies. There we go, wrong slide. So I'll start over, you'll note that the amount at the bottom is a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred, but the ask is still sixty-three thousand five hundred. Of that amount, thirty thousand came from the twenty twenty-two capital budget, it was approved at that time. What happened with that project is there's been some change of the guard over in Dalkeith, and we really couldn't find anyone to help us spearhead that project. I do have a meeting set up in February with Dalkeith Association, and we're going to be speaking with that group about how we're going to move this project forward. They're really keen on seeing this outdoor ring continue in Dalkeith, it is well-used, I was there on Wednesday afternoon, pardon me, Tuesday afternoon, and we had, actually had people that were out there on Tuesday afternoon playing hockey, so it's surprisingly well-used. And the other funds will be coming to help replace the asphalt pad in Maxville, and that's twenty thousand dollars, that's from the reserve that was for the former Soccer Lights Fund, so the association has kindly agreed to share some of those funds so that we could go and move forward with that major project. So overall, we think that we have a really solid plan for the community groups and to support our community organizations.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions on the MRAC proposed capital budgets? Go ahead, councillor Cadell.
Well, I just go back to page thirty-four, the programs and the, are these annual payments?
So, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, so these are actually out of the operating budget in large part, um, except for the Municipal Recreation Association capital expenditures, and that's noted there at the second line. So a lot of these do come through the township's operating budget, and they are supports and commitments that council has made to various organizations over the years.
And they're an annual payment?
Um, yes, they are, I report on these annually.
And how do you get to be on this list?
So groups will come and petition council as a delegation, usually make a proposal.
Okay. That's, that's all. That's it, okay, thank you. So some of those that you're looking at on page thirty-four, such as Glengarry County Archives, Pioneer Museum, uh, those are always in the budget. That, um, now Glengarry Memorial Hospital, I guess my question is, on that twenty thousand, is that something that's going forward in twenty twenty-three?
So. There?
No.
Sorry, no, it's been taken out.
It's been taken out, okay, thank you, and that's all I have, okay, any other further questions, councillor Martin?
Yeah, my question's on the, is my mic on? My question's on the County Archives and the Pioneer Museum, is that operating and capitals?
It's, it's operating.
It's operating.
Operating.
Okay, thank you, okay, continues. Just if anybody's looking when we're talking, it's usually the last page of the current one that we're on that has the capital, so.
Yeah, I I don't.
Yeah, I'll just get it here, so for this one coming up, economic development, it's on page forty-four, it's at the bottom, there's not a. I think, and the, in the, in, just going back to your community services department, in the second paragraph, minor sports subsidy is still listed and probably should be removed. In the second paragraph.
We'll make that correction, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
So on to economic development, as you know, we work with Natalie Sharet, she's our Economic Development and Communications Officer, and she's in large part responsible for the activities that go on in that budget. I'll start by saying that there are no capital asks for economic development, but I'll just do the introduction anyways. Um, so she supports our Community Improvement Plan and the County's Regional Incentive Program. Anyone who's been involved with those two programs know that, I'll call it almost like a labor of love, because you are literally handholding your client through the whole process, and these, in in respect to the Community Improvement Plan, you often have eighteen. you often have eighteen months to be able to accomplish a major project with the counties. They limit it to twelve months. It used to be eighteen, but it's down to twelve. So there is a lot of hand-holding to ensure that the projects are successful and that those funds are dispersed at the end of the day. We also will continue to work with and in the community to support activities and events. We did bring a report to council on the proposed Meet Me on Main Street project. So that shows you how we are expanding the activities in the community. And we are also going to highlight a few of the 2022 achievements. And that was piloting the commercial gap analysis data. And that's being used to support the growth study and some future changes to the official plan. And also on a side note, we were able to share that data with the Alexandria Chamber of Commerce and with a really exciting project that we hope to be able to bring forward, an update to council on in the future. We implemented the My Main Street program. Council will recall that we applied for the funds for that and we were able to subsidize the My Main Street Ambassador's salary. And we also were able to share a hundred thousand dollars to ten businesses in the community so that they would be able to purchase some equipment that would help them with their businesses. So these are actually capital purchases that will improve the businesses and how they function. So that was a sizable intake or influx into the community. We also worked on the redistribution of the electoral boundaries for the township. We were able to list some non-designated properties on the Municipal Heritage Registry. And we also created some bilingual videos for North Glengarry that ran on Facebook and now have a home on our YouTube page. In respect to the community grants, and this is addressing operating a little bit later, but we would respectfully request that council leaves the full amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget. What we did in the past is we would bring a report telling you how much of a request we had for those community grant dollars. And then that specific amount would be reallocated to the budget line. What we're hoping to be able to do is have a second intake with the funds that are remaining and be able to expend those twenty-five thousand dollars in the community. We've seen some really great ideas come across our desk and we're not able to entertain them because the funding period has closed. So what we will do is we're going to bring the Community Grants Program back to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. They will make their recommendation to council and I suspect that this is one of the recommendations that will come forward. So in preparation for that, we would ask council's leeway in being able to leave that amount of money in the budget for now. So just a note on the operating budget, it is in line with 2022. And again, as I mentioned, there are no capital asks for 2023.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on economic development at this point? Okay. Recreation.
So our Recreation Department, I did have my paper. Here we go. We're going to talk about our, our facilities, so on and so forth. But I wanted to start with the fact that none of the projects that we were able to accomplish in 2022 were done alone. So yes, Recreation piloted the refurbishment of the Glengarry Sports Palace and the installation of the HVAC system. But if we didn't have the collaboration of other departments, and I'm speaking like to Public Works, Tim graciously sat in on the beginning of the HVAC project with Maxville and we were able to go back with the original designs and find a way to cut costs to stay in that grant. And the Building Department has always been so timely reviewing all of the engineering designs that were brought forward. We would not be able to do that if we were by ourselves because we just don't have that knowledge pool. And the Treasury Department has been the one to submit all of the refunds on our grants. I was used to doing that myself in my former life and I know how much time that that takes. So again, all of this assistance is really, really valuable. And Public Works actually came to the rescue with the Glengarry Sports Palace just recently, helping us close out after substantial completion on that grant. And I'm pleased to report that Kim filed the final grant submission to be able to close out the Glengarry Sports Palace. She did that this week. So a big kudos to all those departments for helping us out. So this year, what we're going to be looking at doing is we're going to be looking at different ways that we can fund the, the final projects at the Glengarry Sports Palace. And that's a replacement of the windows, the doors, and hopefully the community hall bathrooms upstairs. We're also looking to coordinate the painting of the exterior tin siding at the Glengarry Sports Palace. So we're very open to the color scheme or the color for that facility. We want to finish the light replacement project on the ball and soccer fields behind the Glengarry Sports Palace. Council has been so gracious to allow us ten thousand dollars a year in our budget, in our capital budget, to be able to do that. And we've been doing it gradually. We're going to be bringing back the quotes to council for the Alexandria Skate Park expansion. And we're really pleased at that project. We were able to sign the continuation with ministry on that. We are looking at replacing the bathroom partitions at Island Park. We did bring back information through the committee of the whole on the fact that we've suffered a lot of vandalism. Those partitions are as old as the building, but still the, the users have been really hard on those installations, so we're looking at replacing them now. And we did get a quote for that and we're hoping to be able to do the work as soon as budget is approved. We are also looking at purchasing some padded vinyl chairs for the Maxville Community Hall. And that, I think, will be a great upgrade for that hall. The hard plastic chairs will be kept. We will be using them when we have events on the arena side, such as the Glengarry Sports Hall of Fame, where we need over four hundred chairs. We are also looking at rebuilding the compressor number one in Maxville. And of course, whenever we see grant opportunities that help us move all of this work forward, we will continue seeking council's direction on the future refurbishment of our facilities. So for the proposed budget, when we come to the Maxville Sports Complex, you're going to see a cost of fifteen thousand dollars for new chairs and you're going to see the refurbishment for the compressor. So the compressors, both of them are on a cycle and they're done usually, depending on wear and tear, between every three and four years. Did you want me to go through the whole?
Any question on the capital, go ahead?
I'm not sure this is exactly the time, but I noticed that the flagpoles were taken down from the former township office. I wonder if we could have at least one of those put up at the park in Alexandria? Because July first last year, there wasn't a Canadian flag in sight.
Can we, can we do that? You're the engineer. Let me put you on the spot.
I'm pretty sure we could organize a flagpole. I think that we actually took those, because they're good quality flagpoles. I think we actually took them to replace some ones that we've been having some trouble with that are already existing. But I'll definitely look into that to, to get one up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor.
I've been asked to inquire about the ice surface in Maxville and the refurbishment eventually of the arena. Are we set, should a grant become available? Are we set to maybe jump on that and get that project done or?
So thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly what happened with the Glengarry Sports Palace. We had an opportunity to be able to apply for the grant and we always bring these grant opportunities back to council. Council has to give me permission. It has to be passed by a resolution that accompanies a grant. So ultimately, it depends on council and the direction they want to take. But I will definitely be bringing you back all of the grant opportunities I can find.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No further questions or comments? Okay, continue, Anne.
So we're now on to Island Park. And you'll see there that we have the thirty thousand dollars and that's actually a placeholder that was passed in the 2022 budget for Mill Square. And we're keeping it there. We're not planning on doing any work this year, but we want it available the minute we start tackling the Alexander Main Street project that we're working on with the counties at the moment. So the skate park expansion funds are all there and you're going to see that at the bottom. It's subsidized through grants and donation. As council knows, we already have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that and we have nearly sixty thousand dollars of community funds that have been raised to date. So that money is available there. We have the siding at the Sandfield Building. It's the old Connect Cell material and we noticed degradation on the north and south sides of the building. We're not sure if we're going to be able to replace just part or, you know, partial replacements, just touch those walls, or if it means having to redo the upper portion. This is a portion that's above the brick, the green portion. So we're going to be investigating that. And we did a quick and dirty analysis of how much it would cost and between labor and materials, we should be good to be able to do that replacement. And then we're looking at, pardon me, we're looking at the bathroom partitions, which are quoted at about eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Massey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just two things. I'm all for refurbishing or like redoing the interlock at the Mill Square. When I was there this fall and it was absolutely dirty. It was a Saturday night. You know the, the little park we have at Mill Square? Like, I know that the, it's, the interlock is, like, I'd like to, if we could clean that up. But the actual place, the leaves, the garbage was full. Everything was dirty. So if we are going to spend money, can we not make sure that it's kept clean? It was a Saturday night and now it wasn't a long weekend. Just a comment and also on the, the Sandfield Building siding. Can we, I don't know if it's a recall or what, but you know, if we get, council could get a, an idea, like if it's, it's old siding that looked like when it was built in the nineties or maybe we could have a different opinion on what kind of siding goes there? You know, maybe like there's new, there's new building material available too that, you know, like a new look to the building instead of just slapping on the old siding that looked nineties? You know, like a Borden-Batten face facade or something like that, that's.
Go ahead, Anne.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a semblance of Borden-Batten, if you wish, because it's that old Connect Cell and it has a wood texture on it. So we are definitely not looking at modernizing or putting vinyl or anything like that. We're looking at replacing possibly with cement board that's textured and that would really respect the look of the building, so.
Go ahead.
Since we are taking an application and giving our advice on the CIP application, can that project, that go to the, that department?
No.
Okay, could we, okay, just asking. It's just that we do pass a comment on what property owners put their facade up and we're trying to say, oh, no, steer away from that. But I'd like to us to have a little bit of input on it.
Yeah, yeah, they can do input.
We have input whenever.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah.
Not that I don't trust your case, but sometimes you have other ideas, but.
That's fine. I think all hands on that committee anyway, so.
Absolutely.
And the Arts, Culture and Heritage, look at it.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, and that perfect example of that is we had brought the water treatment building over to the Arts, Culture and Heritage and we do respect that.
That's good.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the thirty thousand for the Mill Square refurbishing, I just wonder why that's in there and why it's not in reserves?
It wasn't, it was in last year's budget and it wasn't used. So you'll see the funding source below is thirty thousand from reserves.
So they just keep moving it forward.
So we just keep moving it forward until it's used.
Oh, until it gets, yeah. Okay, so it's effectively still in reserves, that's what you're saying? Okay, so that's good. With regards to the skate park expansion, what is the date, the, the due date, the new due date to spend that money?
So we have a due date of the thirty-first of September this year.
This year? It has to be spent?
Well, it has to be spent by the thirty-first of March and they told us that we could have an extension until the thirty-first of March next year. But we know that for us, we can't build in the winter, so we're aiming for the thirty-first of September.
Okay, I'm, I'm just concerned about either getting this project moving or, or, you know, or, or getting it off our books, one or the other. And I, I'm just wondering when, because it's really going to depend on when the quotes come in, whether it's still in budget or not. And so how quickly are we going to be able to do that so that we can either, like I said, get moving on it or get it off our books?
So, absolutely. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. councillor Madden and I spoke about that just recently and we're planning an onsite meeting with excavators to be able to get that project going. So definitely will bring back the quotes and our goal is to be shovel-ready the minute that we're able to start digging.
Okay, and just a confirmation that this, this project will not proceed unless it remains within the existing budget?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, anything that comes regarding this project, we will be bringing back quotes to council.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, councillor Cadell.
While we're talking about Mill Square and things like that, I believe we paid thirty-five thousand dollars for the lot next to the old car wash and now it's occupied by a single tree, you know? And Mill Square as a park is losing out on that space. And I, I, you know, preserve the trees, but I would like to respectfully suggest that we cut that tree down and make use of the full area of that lot.
But what are we going to do for a Christmas tree?
We can put one up, you know, we'll bring a fake one.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So actually, there is some really great design work that was done by BTE, the engineers that initially worked on the Alexandria Main Street project. And I'll be happy to share the design with you. So actually, that was one of the parts of the project that took the longest because they came to us with one or two designs at the beginning and said, oh, that absolutely doesn't work. So I think you'd be very pleased to see how nice that space has been combined with the front part of the lot. So I'll be happy to show that to you.
With the tree?
It does contain the tree, but it's a much more cohesive design.
I'll be glad to see it.
Just a note on that little space. Me and Mayor Jamie had went to the Lozong family, which basically donated that little piece of land. And the father of that family had planted that tree to have a, for it to be a Christmas tree. So it's, there's a little history there. And then the family for that, that lot and that's, yeah.
I don't believe that lot was donated.
No, it wasn't donated, but it was.
There was a portion of it that was donated.
Yeah, there was a portion of it. And that's why there's a plaque there, Lozong. You were on council at that time.
Yeah, I know. Didn't we pay thirty-five thousand dollars?
It could have been, but it probably was.
What's that?
It was a donation.
There was.
I think there's ten thousand.
I think there was some monetary, there was some monetary money involved, but maybe we can just dig that up.
Absolutely.
And find the answer. Yeah, we gave a tax credit to them, yeah. Okay, any further questions or comments? I don't know, the Grinch just ruined Christmas, so. Okay, moving on.
And on that note, I just want to say that I'm in the business of planting trees, not cutting them. So our next budget is very simple, the dome, which has no capital in that. And I just want to touch base on this quickly. You'll see that the funds are for 2024 and something, this is something we're going to be looking at council for direction. There's some work that needs to be done to the tennis court at the dome and we're going to be speaking with council about different options for that. But that's for next year.
Okay. So, go ahead.
On to the Glengarry Sports Palace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The work that we have planned there is pretty simple. We're looking at continuing the replacement of the lights on the soccer and baseball fields and hopefully that amount will complete that project. So that's a really nice way of doing a project. We've been doing it over a period of four years and we've been slowly moving and changing the lights out to LED. Council will recall that we had the old metal halide lights there. So every single light that we replace is a huge cost savings for us. And it also improves our energy rating with the ministry. We have the exterior of the building, so we propose to, oh, I thought maybe, you know, pink and white for the Glengarry Sports Palace. But I'll bring that back to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee for their input if this so gets approved. We would like to make the, the hole look uniform and really work well with the existing brick that we have there. And I think that that will have a huge visual impact that will help the community see the great work that was done inside because everything was done to the inside of the building and nothing was really done to visually represent all of that great work. So we are certain that having, doing that improvement will make a huge change.
And what was the price for that? Because I think it was pretty reasonable.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand to paint the.
Yes.
The, the whole outside.
The whole tin.
The tin on the outside. Well, one's paint.
Yeah, painters or whatever. No, good.
Okay.
And the last project would be the refurbishment of the compressor number two and that's similar to Maxville. It's good maintenance of our equipment and ensures that it stays healthy for us during the year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's it. Perfect. Any further questions or comments? We are moving on to fire services. Everybody get your pencils sharpened.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. The Fire Department.
The fire department is, continues to build a framework on our three levels of defense, fires, public fire safety, fire safety standards, and emergency response. Our department is largely supported by our volunteer firefighters, and we continue to strive to meet all our goals that the Office of the Fire Marshal are bringing forward to us, ensuring that our township is effective in our fire protection service. In twenty twenty-two, we had many accomplishments, it was a very busy year for our department in a multitude of those three defenses. We really focused on our training program as the province enacted a new regulation, which we were fully prepared due to our previous investments in our new training facility located on Divergent Road. Through twenty twenty-two, we hired twelve new recruits where we were able to fully support the new regulation and bring our fire service to that next level that's required by our province. Modernization funds were utilized to expand our training facility, where we were able to purchase some training props, where we're going to be moving forward in terms of modernizing and making our facility available to our neighboring fire services, with the hopes of bringing revenue into our department. Our communication system, as council's aware, we've really invested into our new communication system where, over the years, and in twenty twenty-two, we finished our last phase, phase four, where we connected our dispatch center to our two towers that are located within our municipality, so this was a great feat that was done over a multitude of phases, and I'm pleased to say that the communication system's now up and running, fully effective, which we were able to also implement. Roads Department and as well our emergency operations center is all linked into our, that communication system. In twenty twenty-three, our goal is to continue to modernize and strive to meet all our provincial standards, meeting our training standards, ensuring that our members are fully trained to ensure that we're meeting the regulations set out by the province. We're looking at providing additional water sources throughout our rural sectors to ensure that we have proper fire suppression abilities in those areas. Our fire prevention team continues to work throughout the municipality to ensure that our fire safety standards are met, and that we're going to be addressing any community risks out there. As I continue to mention, the certification is one of our challenges that is always going to be facing us in terms of ensuring that we're meeting that standard. As new recruits are brought into our department, it is a very, you know, time-consuming, very onerous on our volunteers, so we want to ensure that this is done correctly. However, there is an onus on us to meet that standard, and we are certainly prepared to, to meet that in terms of our new training center. Our fire stations are, we continue to put the work and, and maintenance into the stations in terms of meeting all the health and safety requirements. The Ministry of Labor recently published an Ontario checklist for fire services for the cancer prevention checklist. Some of the capital items that we're going to be looking for is to just make sure that we're meeting all these items in terms of, and able to achieve all that checklist in terms of the Ministry of Labor requirements. Our fleet, in twenty twenty-one, our fleet experienced many challenges in terms of fleet safety, we were able to put a program in place where we're monitoring our fleet, and I'm pleased to say that our fleet's in very good working order, and moving forward, we have a very good plan to move forward. As, our fleet is, is truly the key ability in providing a functional and effective fire service. As I mentioned, some of the initiatives that we're going to be undertaking is a new firewall in the northeast area of our township towards Del Keith. This is something that we're looking at over a multitude of years, where we could focus, again, of putting these firewalls in place where we're very far away from a hydrogen source, so this is something that we started many years ago, where we have one on Menard Road, that's twenty thousand gallons, so we're, we're just looking to go a little more north to ensure that we have that, that water source in those areas. You'll see in the fleet that a pumper at Station One in Alexandria is coming due for replacement, a replacement of a pickup truck at Station One, and as I mentioned, those renovations, just to ensure that we're continuously modernizing and making sure that we, we're meeting the safety standards. As well as, in terms of the modernization funds, in terms of the training facility, we're still waiting for the, the props to arrive, so some of those, the modernization funds will be utilized in twenty twenty-three. That's about, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, any questions, other than the fleet, we're going to be discussing as a whole in the next, any questions on page fifty-seven, it has the, the four items that are, or three items that are being done, so go ahead Deputy Mayor.
Thanks for your presentation, and I know that we all got a tour of your wonderful training facility, state-of-the-art, and I think it's wonderful that, you know, you have that facility be able to do proper training and, and hopefully be able to rent it out in the future, as you mentioned. I'm just wondering about, you know, when we, when, when we started talking about this training facility, I, it was a number of years ago, and we'd sort of said, okay, well, we're going to put just this amount of money into it, and then that'll be it, and it's, you know, kind of carried on a little bit in terms of the required investments?
It's unspent reserves.
Oh, it's reserved?
It's coming, it's unspent, I believe.
Oh, unspent?
Yes, so, and that was, the reason why we decided, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Williams, to do the expansion there as well was that this was a great opportunity for you to, us to utilize that modernization money, and in fact, that modernization money was due to be spent a couple of years ago, and we had waited for opportunities within the senior management team to spend that.
Okay.
And in fact, we just learned at Roma that MMH is now giving more money, but we have to spend our first allotment before we can apply to the third round, so we're hoping to complete these projects early in two thousand and twenty-three, so that the SNC team can then apply for more modernization money in the future. So the, the training center was certainly committed to on council's level and as well as the fire department at the, at the certain level, but we saw a huge opportunity within that funding to, to do the expansion, so.
Great, so it's modernization money, I get it, okay, that, that's great.
Yeah, like I said, it was from last year as well.
Right, okay. Will ongoing investment be required going forward in the training facility?
No, through you, Ms. Mayor, there's going to be just an ongoing operating aspect, ensuring that, again, it's, it now becomes an asset as part of the township. In terms of where growth, this is where, again, with the modernization funds that we've utilized, is we're hoping to have that revenue to be able to, to balance out the, the aspects of anything, any further growth is going to be done hopefully through income that we're receiving, so at this stage, you know, it was, the phases are done, it's built, the facility is there, it's really maintaining it. Yes, you know, those training props were, were purchased through the modernization fund, and again, that's what's going to be giving us, that revenue is hopefully having the, the neighborhood departments take part.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, okay, go ahead Counsel Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking ahead to twenty twenty-four and the SCBA purchase of five hundred thousand dollars, which would be a bigger hit, I noticed that's coming out of long-term debt, or scheduled to come out of long-term debt, I'm wondering whether we shouldn't be budgeting that on a yearly basis or whatever, similar to what we do with elections, where we, we budget certain amounts, we don't get hit with the, every four years with a big bill for, I mean, this is, this is half a million dollars, right, we're, we're dealing with, so I'm wondering whether we shouldn't be looking at sort of planning that out over a longer period of time instead of getting that hit or whatever, and I realize it's, it's long-term debt, but maybe we can stretch it out, just a thought.
Go ahead Chief Roy.
Through you, Ms. Mayor, thank you. In terms of the SCBAs, thank you for bringing that forward, yes, this is an item that we're actually still looking at in terms of assessing where our current standard, where our current SCBAs are, it is, as Counsel Massey indicated, yes, we do still have outstanding debt on, on the previous one, so this is something that we want to review, this is an item that we do want to look at. There is an opportunity also is that, to assess where our current SCBAs are, there is that ability to sell those and have that revenue, so once we reach an end of our cycle life, this is where that value of it, we're not getting any return from those SCBAs, because once they do reach a certain time, timeline, they're just, they're, they're no more good, so, or not meeting any further standards, so it's, I would say that this item is going to be looked at for twenty twenty-four and not necessarily going to be budgeted on that, on that item, so.
Good, good, Counsel Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the wells, Matt, you know, I know we have one in Del Keith at the Recreation or Community Hall, and we have one in Glen Sandville that we had council invested in a few years ago, but I, I had heard that we do a lot of water shuttle to Alexandria at the molding, so why, why do we do the shuttle all the way to Alexandria when, or the wells, maybe you can clarify the thing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of, yes, we do have, as you're all aware, is that we do have a water shuttle accreditation, so anytime that there is a fire in, in the rural sector, we're required to meet a certain standard, at this, at this time, we're required to provide eight hundred gallons per minute. In terms of that effectiveness, we need to meet that standard. These wells can provide that for a certain duration, then we have to transition, let's say in Del Keith, it's only ten thousand gallons of water. This is where we need to look at for Del Keith, is that we're looking at from, to increase that from a twenty, or to a twenty to thirty thousand gallons of water in that area. And our road is down at twenty thousand gallons, that's a new modern one, but however, the ones in Del Keith are not in a strategic location, it's located right on a hill, it's deteriorating, it's not even, the covers and so forth need to be modernized to NFPA standards, so we're looking at a different location and a new, where, you know, we'll still be able to meet that water shuttle service in that area, we need to make sure of that because that, that accreditation is basically, requires us to meet that demand, so yes, we're always going to end up shuttling that water, has to be refilled, but there, it's just in terms of our operation and our suppression processes, that's how it kind of rolls.
Counsel Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, quick question, don't need serious detail, I'm just curious, some examples of the renos that need to happen at the stations, please.
Yes, thank you, through you, Ms. Mayor, is, in terms of some of the cancer prevention checklist is identifying is that our bunker gear has to be in an area where it's excluded from any exhaust, as well as ventilation needs to be implemented within our, our stations. Currently, diesel exhaust particulates are remaining within the stations, and the bunker gears are, you know, absorbing that material. We've really had a focus over the last many years in terms of removing any particulates or cancer-causing contaminants for our firefighters, we've made many strides, and this is just another thing that we just want to move forward, is, is having some exhaust abilities to take those particulates out there, to ensure that our firefighters aren't continuously exposed to those diesel particulates.
Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Matt, and at this point, we'll take a ten-minute break, we'll get back here for five to eleven, and you've got an hour and five minutes to get everything done with yours, and then we'll hopefully hit operating in the afternoon, so ten minutes. Good, okay, welcome back, everybody, we are going to move into corporate fleet and machinery and equipment, and I'm going to, oh, you're going to go ahead, thanks, Kim, go ahead.
The township is looking at its total fleet needs as a single unit, so it's not part of, and the, the area has been defined in the capital budget, so you know if it's an SUV, if it's for fire, if it's for Public Works, whatever. So they've been identified on these, what we're having challenges with right now is equipment that is purchased this year, we're not, we're seeing like a year before we actually get it. So what's identified in the, the fleet budget at first, there are items that are highlighted in green, I'm going to move forward. Items highlighted in green are long-term debt items, however, there is no long-term debt charges, repayment charges in the twenty twenty-three budget, because even though we, even if we order these, say, February, March, we're not going to see them till next year. So next year's budget will reflect any long-term debt charges for these items if they're approved by capital, by council, sorry. The three-quarter ton truck, sorry, the items on here by the department, if you have questions, will be directed to the department. There is one change, and it is on the third page, the two items noted in green, the rubber tired excavator and brushing head will be taken out, and that'll reduce the long-term debt, but it will have no, no impact on the, on the tax budget this year. I'll let the Director of Public Works speak to that, the reasoning there.
So, the, the reason I took that out is I'm making so many changes to the work plan for, for our guys, I'm doubtful in our ability to be able to utilize that equipment fully, and I don't want it sitting, so I think what we'll, what we'll do instead is we move some money around in operating, so we can rent an operator and a, and a guy, we're still going to supplement it with our trucks, but, and it, it seemed, it didn't seem like the best way to go considering all the other changes, so, you know, we'll measure twice and, and cut once essentially to make sure we're ready before we go for it.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, just, I agree completely, I was just curious, that brush head is presumably for that excavator, is the idea to be able to use both of our excavators at the same time, or would we not be able to use the existing razor that we have and switch it between our machines with a truck or a trailer if necessary?
That's also a possibility and part of the reason why we, we took it out of there, so the, but really, we, we kind of need to start getting a lot more data from when we're doing these operations, and in twenty twenty-two, we made some, some great improvements to our, our brushing operations, we went and trained an extra, an extra excavator operator to get it, in the first half of twenty twenty-two, it wasn't operating all the time that I wanted it, in the second half it was, it's still operating now, we switched it to ditching for the drainage, and we, yeah, and we trained up another operator to use it to, to basically utilize that equipment better, and we, that operation tends to work as one, one team, so I, it's still yet to be seen whether we're going to lose efficiency if an excavator needs to wait for a brushing head, or whether the, it just all comes down to timing, and we're, we're just really getting into the weeds, and until I have that one operation going perfectly, I don't want to introduce the other piece of equipment.
Go ahead Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, oh, I had a big speech already for this, and you went and ruined it by taking it out. Anyway, thank you for doing that. Just, just a question, what, I, I noticed that some trucks are being replaced with SUVs, I'm just wondering what the rationale is for that, please.
So, we have, I'm not going to be able to do my, I was going to do a little intro for our whole strategy, but it's coming in question, so, that's fine. So I noticed when I started in twenty twenty-one, looking at twenty twenty-two, is we have, the vehicles were, weren't necessarily associated with jobs that we were doing, so the two, there's two that are being replaced, and we're getting a, there was one that was awarded in twenty twenty-one, I believe, that we never received because of supply chain issues, so we, we swapped that one for an SUV as well, because we can get it quicker, and for the. And for the job that I could see it doing, it was going to work better as an SUV. And so essentially, they're more fuel efficient, and they, and if the job that you're doing doesn't require a, a truck bed, then there's no reason to have it. We should get the, the vehicle that is a good, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 cheaper. It is a much more efficient on fuel. So the, the two of them that we're swapping there are going to managers. So I've got two managers who drive around in pickup trucks right now that are not allowed by the union agreement to do any physical work. So there's no reason, in my opinion, for them to have a pickup truck. They still need a, an SUV with all-wheel drive because one of them is a roads manager, so he needs to go around when the snow's out. And, and then Dean is a waterworks manager, so he still needs all-wheel drive, but he doesn't need to haul materials. We can task that to specific teams. Essentially, if we have a piece of work that doesn't require towing capacity and doesn't require a bunch of tools to go into the, to the bed of the truck, we should be looking at doing that more efficiently and using more efficient vehicles for it.
So my question, Kim, so we, we're taking off 559,800 off the capital, just based on what he's taking off. So we're still at around that $2 million. The tandem, we have three tandems in, are two of those, the ones that we ordered last year that are just coming in now. And those are the ones we're discussing about how we're going to fund them. So there could still be a further, hopefully, if we figure something out, that there's a further savings off of what we're long, we have for long-term debt.
Oh, I was, I'm not sure if you're going to get to this or not, Kim, so you can be angry with me if I. But I just wanted to point out, the, the fire truck that's in the 223 budget, and I know I discussed with a couple of council members, that's actually a 224 purchase, so that won't actually hit anything until probably 225. So that, I mean, you're looking at your $2 million, you can sort of, what we're looking at with that is getting pre-approval for that, for this budget, knowing that things are going to take time for it to be built. So that won't come to council, like, on their books until 224, and more than likely not funded till 225. So hopefully, interest rates, et cetera, will be less by then. So the $2 million can further, in theory, be reduced by another $750,000.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Also, because of the time lags, things are in this budget where you know we're not going to get them probably till early 2024 at the, at the earliest. So like I said, there are no long-term debt charges that are hitting operating for any of these things, notices as long-term debt for 2023.
Okay. Councilor Massey.
Weed harvester trailer for the, I don't know what that is, but, and then back on the second page over, you got a crack sealing trailer. And I know, I do know that we do spend considerable amount of money to float our excavator every year. So couldn't we not instead, and we have the trucks to pull it, couldn't we not instead get the multipurpose trailer that does everything?
The weed harvester trailer is very specific, but go, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we, well, I'm sure we'll move through it, and I can go through this stuff in a little bit more detail. But there was, prior to me starting, there was a kind of analysis done for where we put our excavator and how much it costs to float it. And we have, we essentially have very good service for floating our excavator right now. What we require, what the weed harvesting trailer does and what the other vehicles do, sorry, the other trailers do, is a very different job to the excavator float, as, as you probably be aware. Like, the weed harvesting trailer actually has some, I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit later because it's just not about that. But essentially, for, for the floating service, we have a contractor that gives us a very good rate. And so so far, it's been more effective to use that contractor whenever it's needed. But as I was, as I was going through before, is as we really streamline that brushing and ditching operations, it could become, it could become more effective. Although if we string, I mean, what I plan to do is to string the lot, the roads together that we're going to do in the same area, instead of kind of jumping backwards and forth to reduce the amount that we need to float overall. So it will probably end up being cheaper. We also require different tickets and different training to float the excavator because it's a different piece of equipment to, to most of what we use. So there's a, there's a lot of variables, but I, I completely understand your point. And if there's an opportunity to do that, we certainly will.
Right now, we do move our weed harvester, if you're in an efficient way, why don't we stay like that? Why don't we keep the, the old thing going instead of sending $40,000 bucks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, okay.
You already passed this earlier, but go ahead.
Yeah, so our, the weed harvesting trailer is a little bit more complex. So the, I wish I could show you a photo, but at the moment, we essentially lose our entire Alexandria work team to, to weed harvesting for a portion of time to get, to get it done. And what they're really doing right now is when the weed comes, gets onto the, the harvester, and they bring it over to the shore, and then they shoot it into the bucket of the loader, which takes another guy. So there's only three guys in the Alexandria team, right? Throws it into the bucket, and then there's the tandem standing there, and then we go over and we dump it. Very, very slow operation, takes a very, a lot of time. And I need essentially two DZ drivers and the other ones are foremen who's running around and coming back and checking on them. What I want to do with this operation is essentially put only one operator and a student with it. What the weed harvester trailer does is as the weed harvester itself uses its conveyor belt to put the, to bring the weed off of the boat, the trailer has a conveyor belt on it as well. Yeah, so it brings it on, and then the student who doesn't need a, like, he doesn't need a DZ license or anything, can actually take it to where we put the weed and then just reactivate the trailer. So completely eliminates the need for the loader and the tandem, so it's pretty neat.
No, I thought it was to, to move the weed harvester, not the weeds.
It also, you know, and then at the end of the season as well, it's going to be great so we can, at the end of the season, again, without a DZ driver, we can use that conveyor belt to pull the weed harvester out and store it as well. It also, no, that's okay. But there's, there's also, there are, in my budget, there are quite a few trailers. Part of that reason is, is to, to cut down our time on, like, storage and movement and material handling. So a lot of these, you'll see they're small utility trailers. So for example, the forms. So I, I really want the, the operations for doing side, you know, sidewalks and curbs and that sort of thing, is we're all ready to go. Those forms stay on that trailer, and when we have a section to go do, we've got our traffic control stuff there. We bring that across, we set everything up, we've got everything that we need, we go and do that. No one's running backwards and forwards to the shop to get different things that they lost or, you know, stored everywhere, and, yeah.
Good. Are there any further questions on, go ahead.
The pumper is going to next year. The excavator and the brushing head are out. I've got that as about 1.310. Take that out of the 2559, it leaves us with about $1,249,000.
Go ahead.
Sorry, just point of clarification. So the pumper's not moving? Like, council will approve that in 2023, so the chief can get going on specking and ordering and tender. Like, you'll see the tender document come in 2023. So it's like a pre-approval this year to receive it in 2024. We did it like this, rather than the chief bringing, like, we passed the budget today, then the chief bringing a separate report, say, in March, when you've just approved the budget, to then bring it forward to 2024. So we're just asking for pre-approval through this budget, with it being funded not more than likely till, like, the end of 2024, when he receives it.
But you're right, that the, the, the amount of long-term debt, it won't be in this current.
It's not in this current year.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Are there any, go ahead, Councilor Mayor.
Yeah, just a quick question. So to Matt, to you, I noticed the fire department's got a $70,000, three-quarter ton pickup. Is there, is there any, is that, is that a management-type unit, or is that a work unit that you, that you need a pickup truck for?
So this is, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is to replace the current pickup truck that's allocated there. What this pickup truck is utilized for is specifically for after-fire calls in terms of returning any type of materials that are contaminated, such as hoses, bunker gear, SCBA's. We can't, we're not allowed to put them back into the fire apparatus. So that's what this vehicle's for. Clearly, fleet has gone up in terms of what the prices are. However, our equipment also included in this price is also, we have to outfit it with emergency lighting and so forth, so that includes that. So it may, you may see pickup trucks for the fire department a little more than what Public Works is, just because of that additional element that's due. However, we are looking at ensuring that, that type of, that the pickup truck that's being utilized, that we can, either that we're going to downgrade to a, a smaller truck or with a bigger box. So instead of needing a, you know, a three-quarter ton or one ton, we may just go down to a Colorado or something that, to meet that need.
Disappointed that my helicopter's not in this budget, but whatever. You guys, go ahead, Councilor Massey.
On that pickup, Matt and Tim, can we not take one that was going to be replaced by the Public Works, switch it over to that department? Like, there has to be some life left in our, like, it seems to me that all our pickups are pretty, they're pretty good shape.
They get residual value on it, though.
Yeah, but instead of a 70, 70,000.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've actually tried to, to do that, you know, even through bylaw and so forth. Whenever bylaw's vehicle was cycled out. Unfortunately, the, the state of the vehicles, once they reach us, they're in such bad condition in terms of what's needed for it, is that the maintenance to upkeep it is so far, is so great that it outweighs the, you know, the value of, in terms of getting a, a new vehicle. So, and once they reach us, we're almost hitting, they're coming to us with almost 250,000 kilometers already on it, where it's the value of, we've done that in the past, and we just end up, it hits our operating costs a lot harder in terms of, we're exceeding our operating costs in terms of maintenance. So that's the reason.
Like, on Deputy Mayor's point for the last 10 years, could we not have a list or a report on their pickup? It seems like we have a, a lot, Tim, sorry, a lot of pickup? Like, there was a lot of vehicles that.
I think everything is on there, right? Everything is on there.
Okay. With the monitors and everything?
Everyone we have.
Could we not get a, like, a status? You know, I'm pretty sure it's easy to do, 250 clicks, 230, 130, yeah, like a condition.
Yep, for sure. Go ahead, Tim.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was also just going to say that the two, the ones that we are, that are at the end of their life right now are definitely at the end of their life. The, the two specific that we're getting rid of and replacing with the two SUVs. You wouldn't want to transfer them to fire.
Any further questions on the fleet capital? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Roads Department budget. Oh, sorry, I think there was just one question on the, the ATV electric. It's just because the other one is just out of, I know we bought it in 2012, and we have to use it inside the dome.
Absolutely, and we already replaced the batteries once on the unit. The batteries are $6,000. So now it's not holding its charge anymore.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my department is very tied into, you know, machinery and equipment as well, so I'll, I'll touch on that. One of the major, as, as you were all there at my last report, we're doing a fairly major, fairly major shift in how we're doing our operations. And so key to this is the crack sealing trailer and the crack sealing router. So if you remember my last report, one of the main things that we can do to extend the life of our roads is seal the cracks in a timely manner. So this is really our, one of our major purchases for 2023 is getting this, getting this trailer. So this trailer isn't a, you know, a blank trailer, it's an actual kettle with a, with equipment on the back to actually kind of spray seal, and then the router actually routes out the crack to prevent the, the crack spreading essentially. So very, very important, that's one of our main things. The other thing I wanted to mention that I forgot to mention on fleet was just that going forward, our tandem fleet is in very poor condition, apart from the new vehicles that we've gotten. And it looks like in the past, we've purchased, and when I say in the past, I mean 10, 15 years, we purchased tandems quite a lot at one time. And so we're seeing a fairly big, really failure at the moment for those. So what we're doing is, my predecessor replaced those two tandems, which is excellent, we just received them. And going forward, we're going to try and replace one tandem a year until we get to a point where our, our fleet has been renewed, and then we'll utilize that asset management plan to make sure that we're replacing them every 15 years, which is in line with what the county's doing. Really, after 15 years, that's where your maintenance costs start to really outweigh, really start to outweigh your purchasing costs. So that's fairly major. We're also looking at getting two disc mowers. This is also what the county does to help with the weed suppression on the roadsides. It also helps with our brushing and ditching a lot. So those disc mowers will let us go a lot faster. In the past, other Public Works directors haven't used them because they often hit rocks and that sort of thing and, and don't last very long. The new technologies that they've been coming out with, the counties are reporting that they're having very good track record with their disc mowers. So we're very eager to go and, go ahead and try that because it, well, we don't really need to try, the counties have been testing it for us. And we'll go in with a tandem, with them to, to get these disc mowers, same spec and everything. And that'll actually let us do a pass on, on all the roads essentially in about half the time that we do at the moment. And then we can switch to a flail mower, which is a lot slower and does a lot of, does a lot better job, and it, it's a lot neater and a lot more detailed, but it's not as fast. So by utilizing our flail mowers and, and adding the disc mowers to them, I'm sure we're going to see a huge improvement in, in our roadside mowing. So. Okay, thank you. The only thing, other thing I wanted to mention was those were the two utility trailers that are there, that is, for those reasons I spoke about before. So Public Works Department. So in 20, I'll just talk quickly about in 2022. So in 2022, we did repave a lot of roads. And we repaved all of our roads in Apple Hill. We also did West Boundary here and a section on Bishop. We talked about the pickup trucks already. And, and we trialed some technologies for our sidewalks to try and see how we can do those the best we can. We also, I also spent a lot of time looking at our bridge inventory. We didn't go ahead with any particular work in 2022 because our OSIM reports came in late. But you'll see most of that in the, when I get to those slides for what we're going to do going forward. So in 2023, fuel has been an absolute kick in the guts. So I, we looked at it early, we knew that the prices were going up, we did everything we could to really conserve fuel. I put my estimate, when I first put this budget in, as way higher than what it was, and it was, it even exceeded that. So fuel has been an absolute kick in the guts, but, you know, there's, there's really not much that we can do about it that we're already doing by switching to more fuel-efficient vehicles. We want to try and cut down on the driving between jobs. Time is, is one of our major concerns. We want to get to a place, do a job, you know, go back to the shop instead of going backwards and forwards, because that really takes a, a big hit on operating right now.
What do, what do we do for our fuel? I know I see the sign checks for the trucks that fill up at regular gas stations, but what do that fill up at regular gas stations, but what do we do for the tandems?
So they are, we have a clear and colored contracts with McEwen, and they supply those to the, to the shops and we fill up from there.
Okay.
So in 2023, we want to, like, one of our major things that we want to go and do is a stormwater management plan. So with the new asset management changes that the province has taken on, we have these one ECA, one environmental compliance approval process. And that's going to help streamline up for developers and promote extra housing, which is going to be great as well. But one of the things we really need to do is get an idea of what our stormwater management system is and what it can handle. At the moment, with the data that we have, it's essentially been pieced together the best it could by, you know, the, the previous managers and directors. So I actually, I wrote this down here, that we were going to retain an engineering firm. In consultations with the counties, we've found that they've actually had some success with some new technologies and a contractor who'll give us more data on that, that'll be able to, that will be able to provide to an engineering firm to give us a more refined price when it comes to them actually coming up with a hydraulic model for our stormwater management system. The overall purpose of this is, one, to satisfy the asset management requirements from the Ontario government that is getting more and more stringent as we move along the timeline there. The other thing is so that we can actually be able to tell what parts of our infrastructure can withstand a one in 100 year storm. As the climate is changing and these issues are coming up and we're getting more extreme weather events, we want to make sure that we're not susceptible to flooding. And our stormwater management is, is key to that. So the first stage that we'll be doing early is going in with a joint tender with the county to essentially inventory everything that we've got. We essentially have all of the stormwater management grades, so we know where each of our manholes and catch basins are. And the, what these guys will be doing is dropping a camera into each one, giving us a condition rating and confirming exactly which ones connect to which ones, right? And they do that actively in the truck as they're, as they're surveying these. So it's very useful data. The counties has already gone and done it, so it's already tried and tested, which is nice. And then I'll take that and form that into an RFP that we'll put out for an engineering firm to then go and do a hydraulic model and recommend a capital plan for us. So to see if, as we go forward, what, what sections do we need to replace, what's in, in, in bad condition. And really, this is, I, I had, in the 2022 budget, we had some items in there for stormwater cammering and clearing some blockages and things like that. And I had a major concern that as we go, if we went ahead with those projects, we could be causing, you know, just widening a section that's then going to bottleneck later. And we're going to move the flooding from here down the road to here, right? So this is the best way to really go about it. And we'll be able to see straight away from those condition reports if we need to do some immediate work. So obviously, if something's like a condition red, you know, we'll, we know the stuff that we can do very quickly, as we'll have that entire inventory. But essentially, at the moment, we're, we're really guessing or going on anecdotes on what, what connects to what and what the condition rating is. So this is a, a long-term plan. I expect this to be, keep on going year over year to, to get our, all of our stormwater systems up and to the standard that we want them to be. Sidewalk replacements. So we have a good new sidewalk system in Maxville. In Alexandria and Glen Robinson, we have some deteriorated sidewalks. So this year, the emphasis will be on eliminating any hazards. And then in, in the preceding years, we're going to go and start looking at bringing our sidewalks up to standard. So you'll notice that there's a lot of red sprays and that sort of thing everywhere. This, in 2022, we went and trialed some different companies who have different techniques to take care of these tripping hazards effectively and cost efficiently. They were very successful and very cost efficient. So we're going to try and eliminate all these hazards across the township. That, this includes us mapping all of the deficiencies that we have and finding out what sections should be replaced. So, you know, if, if we have so many defects on a, on a certain section, we're just going to replace all those sidewalk panels. If we have, you know, only a few cracks and we're going to use some other techniques just to eliminate those tripping hazards. We do have a major problem with our accessibility ramps. So we do need to upgrade those. Essentially, at the moment, we're grandfathered in, we don't have an issue with our, with our ramps because we have old sidewalks. But as we go along, we really want to make them accessible for you and an aging population and people with, with mobility issues, including just regular pedestrians. So that's, that's what that piece of money's for. We also are implementing a community portal for public inquiries. This is essentially already in operating budget, so we're pretty happy with that. That's going to work into our, our work plan so that, you know, we have one team who's really dealing with these complaints. If we can stack up what the issues are, then we can work effectively as that team and have that, that one team respond to everything. It'll also give us a nice uniformity throughout the township. So, you know, if different foremen would, would deal with different issues in different ways, it'll be essentially uniform and we won't get any different treatment, you know, throughout the township, right? So bridges are fairly major. So we'll be putting the design and the tendon for, the design and the tender together for Dominion Street. One of the major things with concrete contractors is by the time all the budgets are passed, all of the stuff has already been tended and you're, you're kind of picking at the scraps for contractors. So measure twice, cut once, what our plan is to, because on Dominion Street, we want to go and do some geotechnical investigation and make sure the geotechnical conditions are as we suspect they are. And then put together a comprehensive package for the contractor. And then I'll probably come to you in, at the end of the year to see if we can get early approval. If our budget is even earlier in 2024, then we won't need to. But the intent is for the work on Dominion Street to happen in 2024. It'll be a full closure of that section and we'll direct people around to Bishop. And we're replacing that bridge like for like, essentially. Yeah, so that's one of our major ones. Oh, and this is another thing. So we have a lot of bridges without the required traffic barriers. So there's also a plan, an asset management plan to essentially bring all our bridges up to standard, get all of the required traffic barriers in there. And you'll see that.
Sorry, Tim, what's the traffic barrier on the bridge?
So it, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's the, the guardrail. So a traffic barrier, not only leading up, but on the bridge itself.
Okay.
So we have a lot of bridges on rural roads that don't have the required traffic barrier. Just they've been, that was how they were built and it's always been that way. And it's been identified and, and now we really need to bring everything up to, up to standard. It's very expensive, so we can't do it all at once. We have one of those, one actual installation planned. It's probably going to make a few people upset because of, you know, farm equipment moving across those bridges. And we're going to, part of those studies, you'll notice each one is a study and then the work happening the next year. Part of that study is to try and figure out, you know, what's really moving across there. Is that equipment still going to be able to move afterwards? You know, is the bridge sufficient? You know, we, each one is taking an engineer and going a look at these and trying to make it work. Eliminate the hazard is, is what we're looking for. So in RARE, we're investigating, partnering with Call to Recycle for a Battery Depot, that'd be very good. We're investigating a permanent hazardous waste depot. I have a fairly decent update with this. The Regional Waste Management Group has, that Ben came and talked to you about last time. There's a, a report coming actually on Monday about, about those systems and different things we're going to try and do with hazardous waste and the new Ontario regulations, including accessibility that came into place on January 1st. So we've got a lot going on at RARE. And obviously, there's our blue box transition coming up in 2025. So there's, there's more to happen there as well. But essentially, on a capital, on a capital view of things, we're not really, we're trying not to spend any money on the RARE plant. We have some money in there just for, we've labeled it HVAC upgrades, but it's really just to make sure everything can stay operational. We may want to actually use that funds for anything that's really required just to maintain operations. But when, we're not investing any major money into the RARE plant until we really know what's happening with it. There's still quite a possibility that someone will want to purchase it for the ECA. There's other possibilities, maybe we'll just need to sell it, whatever happens. So, so that's that. We also had a lot of success with the 2022 large item pickup pilot. We had a very, a lot of pleased residents. So there'll also be a report coming asking to continue that program and perhaps expand it. We ran it with no advertising in 2022, apart from some isolated social media posts. And it seemed to help out a lot of residents. So, and it's, it's intended to be cost neutral. And we still probably need to play with, play, we need to decide whether we want to play around with that price to really make it truly cost neutral, or whether we want it to have, have it as a very cheap program that we subsidize slightly. So that'll be in, in another report.
Back to the, the old, well, few department, Public Works Department managers ago, had mentioned that because of the large items they take out, not that it's costly to have, but it's costly to put in our landfill because it reduces the number of years of the, so could we have, could, could you look into that too? I know everybody would like to have their large items picked out, but it's, if it's going to affect the bottom line at the landfill lifespan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's one of the great things about the large item pickup program is the items don't go to our landfill. So that's our major bonus from, from this program is, is we.
To go and bring it there, so we're saying.
Yep, no, it's all good. And we have a lot of, there's been a lot of other municipalities as well who have, who I'll not mention, but have contacted us to, to see how we're doing it because they are finding that it's a very large financial strain doing these large one day pickups. They plan it for a certain amount of money, but once you start it, you can't stop it and you can't control it gets put on the curb. So it ends up costing them more than they suspected it was going to when they started. So I think it's a good thing we should keep on going, but I'll, I'll bring another report for, for confirmation of that.
Quick question. Just a, a quick question on that, Tim. They're not going to our landfill. Are we actually recovering dollars from this? Like, are we scrapping this stuff? Are we getting any residual?
Yes. So we, it goes back to, depending on what area we're collecting from, it normally goes back to RARE. Some of the items we put aside that other people can come and collect if they want to reuse it because I'm, we got a grand piano. We got a barbecue. I think we actually, at RARE, we took the barbecue because it was working and we had a barbecue for the RARE plant, so they were very happy.
Grand piano right in the middle.
Brian. So, yes. We try and reuse whenever we can. We can try and, and the metal objects, we take to the, the local recycling place and we get money back from that as well. So, yeah, and that all goes into the large item pickup budget. So it, it all gets accounted for there, so.
Just a comment on that. The, the other municipalities that are calling and asking because they're, I've seen this where, you know, it's set for a Monday, everybody sets everything out on a Sunday, and all the pickers cruise by on Sunday afternoon, take all the valuable metal, anything that's worth any money. And then the municipalities are just left with stuff that they have to dispose of, right? So this, this is great because we actually do get some residual value out of it. Because it's not all done at once, it's done as a scheduled pickup. So, good job.
Thank you. Please keep some of those comments for my large item pickup report. Okay, so, so this is the bridges. So this was a fairly major hit. So we got that OSIM report about midway through, through 2022. And it showed a lot larger expenditure than we had in the 22, 2022 budget. So some of the work we're going to. Oh, no problems. So some of these items, I've actually collapsed down, but the, the work we plan to do is some physical repairs on Bishop Street Bridge. That's probably the, the most expensive line item of work that we actually want to undertake this year. Because it's smaller in value, it's not a full bridge replacement, I don't think there's going to be an issue if we're sending out that tender a little bit later, as in, and when I say later, I mean February. The, we're also going to do a rehab, so rehabilitation replacement study. So for the traffic barrier on Athol Road Bridge, we also, we have, I'll list all the studies. So we're doing studies on, these could be for the traffic barrier, they could be monitoring for deformations, they could be a replacement study. And they could just be replacement studies for portions of the bridge. So those are Athol Road, Concession 21 Bridge, Max Corners Road, Blind Road Bridge, oh, sorry, not Blind Road Bridge, Mackin T Road Bridge, Kenyon Concession 19 Bridge, Centre Street Bridge, and Kenyon Concession 7 Road Culvert. So all of those are getting studies, so engineering work done, monitoring. And this is on top of our, our regular OSIM reports. So this essentially does the detailed studies, which gives us the information that we can use to actually tender it out to a contractor, right? So then if we have that information, we can, we can then put that out and then say, you know, let's do the work that's described in the, in the report. The OSIM reports are just very high level. They'll give us, this is the general condition of the bridge. We recommend further study or you're fine, don't worry about it. So the Dominion Street South Bridge, so we've.
Hold on, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These, these must be just small, are, are these major bridges or are they small ones?
So there is a mix. Some of them are, are larger, some of them are smaller. But most of them are fairly small bridges where we only take care of local roads. So we don't have any major water crossings, not like the counties. But, you know, they, some of them, in fact, there's one large bridge. None of them are of the same scale as the one that we just did. It's slipping my mind right now.
Creek.
Yes, thank you. None of them are of that scale. There is one in the future that, that I'll have to bring another report in about that crosses that same body of water that I'd like to approach in a different kind of way, but that's not on the ticket for this year.
Okay, thank you. Just, I'm just wondering where all of these structures lie within, because remember when, you know, Ryan had that bridge, that bridge plan and I thought all the bridges got done?
No, but we did locate some bridges that we didn't know that we had, that were never on a plan. Definitely the one that you're talking about, we didn't really know we had that bridge. That just showed up.
Oh, just showed up. Okay.
Okay, Councilman Malm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Tim, is this a comprehensive list then? This is, this is what we have?
Uh, no, that's not our entire, entirety of the bridge, bridges. We have, I actually had to consolidate some of those line items together to try and put it on the budget. But there is a lot more data. I can, hold on. So we have 65 structures in total.
So that's, that's what's on our, that's what's on, that's what's on our list.
My apologies.
All right, okay.
The one that we just discovered a couple of years ago, the one that you're talking about, the Creek Road, the one, what's that name?
It's at the end of Creek Road.
Is he on there?
Sorry.
The bridge that on the same water, it's on there?
Yeah.
What's the name of that one?
The Seventeenth.
Okay. So, so some of these bridges might be very small and very small structures, like we could replace those with culverts or something?
Yeah, so this actually includes culverts and bridges.
Okay, so some of these studies, though, let's say Concession 19 Bridge or something, $20,000 for a study, is it a culvert? Like, are we not, we're not spending too much money? We need a study anyways, too.
Yeah, all of the structures are very rigorously, rigorously, sorry, regulated on a provincial level. So we have liability reasons that we need to go and do a study. Yes. Also, keep in mind, these are an estimate as well. So, you know, we'll go out and do a proper procurement process to get the best price possible for, for that bridge.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I know that at one point in time, we were doing a lot of this work ourselves. So are any of these going to be able to be done in-house?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. So in, without looking very detailed into the work plan, I would still say no, just because of the amount of work that I see that needs to be done to, to just our roads. I, in 2022, I found that every, every, almost every staff member was over allocated for what I was requiring them to do within that time period. So I would prefer to contract out as much as this, as possible. But we don't, so none of this work this year is going to be put into, done in-house. A lot of this is measure twice, cut once. So we'll be looking at the work plan this year. I'll be contracting this out, but a lot of our major work is scheduled for, you know, years we're gonna, gonna see. So if that, if that work plan works out that we have spare manpower, we'd definitely go and put, put our guys on it as well.
Councilor Cadell.
Just a question. The bridge on the Seventeenth, is that slated for repair or replacement?
It's, I think we might need a full report to really go into that in detail.
It's a big enough, it's a big enough structure.
Yeah, awkward. I know, I've seen it and it, you know, totally, the support is beams that are rotten as can be. And so could it be maybe an excavation and a lower thing or, or rebuild the structure underneath?
Yeah, I'm, I hear everything you're saying, absolutely. It's, we'll definitely have to look at different options for the structure. I, it definitely deserves a full report in its, in itself.
Okay. Any further questions on, did you have more to, on the bridges?
Through bridges, for bridges? Oh, Dominion is just, that will be tended this year. I think I put 200,000, then we're going to replace in the next year. That's all.
Any further questions on bridges? Seeing none. Okay, keep going.
So then we come to roads. So the reason I took the earlier report is to try and save us a little bit of time here because the roads is quite complex. I will bring back another report when I have a detailed estimate of the roads that we want to do. The intent is in line with the 2021 Roads Need Study, which is to try and go now and preserve the asphalt that we've got, preserve that work that we've already done, so it doesn't degrade, so it doesn't degrade to a, to a place that we have to replace it. So the other, the next roads on the Roads Need Study was in Glen Robinson. So those are the roads that I'm going to go and get an estimate for. And I'll bring back a report exactly for, for what we're going to do, what we're going to do there. So I also have some geotechnical money in there. The stormwater management, we already spoke about, that's, that's the plan to, to go through. I am hoping that that, if you can see the 2023, I've got 145,000 planned for the stormwater management and 186 in 2024. With that meeting from the counties, I'm really hoping I'm going to be able to get it all done for, you know, under 200, the whole thing. Because that, a huge portion of that was going to be the flushing and cammering all those, those pipes. And the county's new technology looks like it's really gonna, gonna help there. We have this ongoing railway crossings issue. We've applied for a grant with the federal government. We're not going to proceed unless we get that grant. Then we've got the spring gravel resurfacing, that's fairly, it's almost like an operational item. This is just to keep our gravel roads in good condition. We go in with a joint ten.
I could just stop you for one second. Go ahead, Kim.
Sorry, can I just get some, through you, Mr. Mayor, can I just get some clarity on the Roads Need Study? That allocation of 1.4 is going to come back in a report in February. Is that clear? I just want to make it part of my notes.
Yes, so that'll come back. So we've, we're going to approve that pocket of money, the 1.4 million for roads. And then they'll come back with, after they've done some more research on what exactly we're going to get for that 1.4 million.
Thank you very much.
No, no, not a road, no, no, that's just stuff that's coming out of that study. Yeah, that's actual work. So, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, so we've got the geotechnical, where was I? Culvert relining, we're going to go in with the counties for that. They have some very, very good technology that stops us from digging up a road, which is great. And then we have slated two crossings that you had mentioned to me on our, in our, after our 2022 budget. So one was on industrial, one is in front of the high school. There was also talk about one in front of the manor. So I don't have that in the budget. The reason that is, is because the county is redoing 22. Until they're done there, we don't want to touch it because it'll, it will get dug up again. So, so that's the two, is one on industrial.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, where on industrial are you looking at? I'm just curious. On McDonald Boulevard.
Yes, my apologies. Yeah, so that's so you can essentially, you could be able to cross from that residential area to the dome or to the Glengarry Spal.
Would, would crossing be right at that entranceway, the pathway that goes, which would make sense. I'm hoping that it would be that pathway that comes from the high school to.
Yes, yeah, that's it.
And just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, just wondering, like, with that money, what, what will that entail? Do you have any idea, Tim, yet, what that, what that's going to look like, what that crosswalk's going to look like?
Yeah, so it should look like essentially the same one as downtown Alexandria. There are a few, it does have to be reviewed by the county. So I don't want to, you know, provide too much details until, make, make any promises that I can't follow through on because they have to approve it. The idea is, is that we get consistency across SDG for when you approach a crossing on a county road. But essentially, we're looking for a type C in the Ontario Traffic Manual, which is, we need the flashing lights and the two lines, a button, that sort of thing. So it really needs to be a, a major crossing. It can't be something that, you know, just puts the onus on the driver to, to stop, like a suggestive crossing.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, I think it's a great idea to put these crossings in. It enables, you know, pedestrian safety. However, that road is a, is a truck route. And I think we definitely, well, I'm sure the counties will be looking at that. One thing we don't want to do is discourage trucks from using it because they have to stop, which is, we all know, they don't like to do. So.
I think the, the amount of times that's going to happen to, to a trucker.
I know, but we don't want more of them going through Alexandria, is what I'm saying.
You don't want to go out with more trucks.
That's right. Yes. Like, we, we want them to use that bypass. And we don't, so we need to be careful about putting barriers that will discourage them from using it.
Oh, you're talking about on, you're not talking about in front of GD?
No, I'm talking about on McDonald Boulevard.
There's only one there, McDonald and five on that main street, so they'll like to go on the, they don't go there anyways. Even if it was a speedway, they'll use the bypass.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. I completely understand what you're saying. That's absolutely going to be in the design. There are, I know there are crossing systems that have loops in the ground, that'll essentially, with a, with a computer to essentially sense the amount of traffic and then make it so that the traffic has already passed before activating the light. I have not done enough research to see if I can get that. But, you know, those systems exist. And as you know, I'm quite, I meet with Ben quite regularly, and he has to review all this before that goes through. So we definitely won't be, you know, encouraging truck traffic to go on any other route. That's, that's what we want.
No, for sure. It's just, we have a hard enough time getting these trucks to use the bypass to begin with. So we just need to be careful about providing any other barriers that are going to, you know, make that worse. That's all. Thank you.
I think, oh, and then the sidewalk repairs, I had previously talked about as well, is that's the plan to eliminate all the hazards. And then we'll go and look at upgrading, upgrading the sidewalks as well to get proper handicap ramps, et cetera. Part of that will be looking at the Main Street, the Main Street design as well, to make sure we're integrating well with the counties along Main Street. So these few slides, you can see, this is essentially straight from the Roads Need Study of what we, this is essentially for optimum maintenance. Keep in mind as well that this doesn't have the geotechnical studies done. So this is assuming proper maintenance has all been done, and that, you know, the ditches are, the ditches are clean, the cracks have been sealed, based on our current condition rating. So, but it gives us a good idea of what money we'll be spending when and where we'll be spending it. So that's the line item for Rare for the, the HVAC system. I will probably, if we have some sort of issue at Rare, then we'd be spending that money to make sure that we keep the operation going. But the idea isn't to spend, we don't want to go and make a big capital investment in Rare at the moment. This is only there in case we need to, if that HVAC system fails and we need to make sure we get some heat in there for the sorters, that's what that money's for. Or if a door fails and we need, need something like that, and it couldn't be covered by the normal operating budget. So on the landfill, we do have a purchase coming up for the Glen Robinson landfill for some barrier land, essentially, to make sure that we're preserving that water catchment area for the well system in Glen Robinson. And then we've got the, a budget item just for the MOE requirements. We don't ever really know what they're, they're going to come at us with. So that money's there in case we need to go and do something for the wells. Yeah.
Tim, those MOE requirements, does that cover our annual sampling, our, our compliance work? Or is that another line?
That's, that's in our operating.
Okay.
But there is, there is, you know, the, the waste disposal site, capital item in there that we sometimes draw upon to pay the consultants as, because we do have, you know, steps as we go, depending how old the, the other landfill sites are to, to go and close them out.
Thank you.
We have time?
Still not here yet, the food. So let's continue.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, on the, the financing part, the funding sources for our $2.2 million investment. And I do notice in reserve, we have a major capital, a reserve of a million dollar. Can we not take 100,000 to put in there? Because that's basically what that should be used to, for? Like, if we take 100 grand from, on top of the other 487,000 that we took from reserve, if we put another 100 grand from that major capital, which is the sale of the land?
Again, it doesn't affect the tax rate.
Yeah, because, yeah, it would, because it, it would reduce the tax base by 100,000.
But we're not borrowing that whole amount. We, yeah, we just discussed that. That was the, the fact that a lot of those items are only coming in 2024. They're put in there now, but a lot of them, and he already took out almost 600,000. We're down to 2 million, plus then the, there's one tandem truck and a pumper truck that won't be coming in in this year.
That's not the fleet.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, no, the department rose the capital.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking about.
Because we have 1.5 billion coming, the funding coming from the tax base. So if we took 100,000 from the reserve of the capital, we'd save 100 grand to the tax base.
Go ahead.
Anyways, we could, I don't know if we would talk about that now, or talk about that later.
Can talk about that, I think talking about it at the end when we get to a number.
So I'll leave it till the end.
Okay, go ahead. This is all capital. No, no, but at the end, when we get down to the number, if you, if we're looking for something or we need something, we can, we can bring it back.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So in 2022, we had a lot of staff changeover. We've been training up a lot of those staff members, and they've been performing very well. They're very eager and hardworking, so I'm happy to report that. We have been trying to also take on a lot more work that we have been previously contracting out due to really low manpower. And we've been really using that work to, to train the new guys as well. So Dean's been doing really well there. We have some major studies that, that was committed to by previous, previous councils to go and get our wastewater study completed for Maxville as well. The, we also have a hydraulic model that needs to be completed. So those items are in the, in the budget. So I'll jump on through. So we have some, and we have some lining projects as well. So we still have, we've got this, we have flow meters in the budget, 25,000. We're talking to some engineering firms right now. We have, we're losing a huge amount of water on paper, out of the, out of the water treatment plant, that we're not really quite accounted for. So part of this money is essentially to look at splitting down the Alexandria system into smaller sections so we can eliminate that, that water loss, right? We've been improving the, that's part of why we've been improving the meters, you know, the meters on private residence and commercial to make sure that those numbers are matching. And so that, but that's what that line item is there, until we have an actual, you know, confirmation. So we have these studies that are supposed to be, that are already committed to, that are rolled over from 2022 to 2023 for the hydraulic model for the water supply system. Once those are complete, that should give us a better idea of essentially the accuracy of our water measuring system. At the moment, something's out of whack. We're not quite sure what it is. But if it, if it comes back and those hydraulic models confirm that we are actually losing that much. much water, which I don't think we are, it's probably also, you know, when we're turning on the hydrants and using them for cleaning, we're maybe not accounting for water properly there, something like that. The hydraulic model will help us confirm that, if those numbers match, and then that $25,000 there is to go and put, is to help us try and pin down what part of Alexandria is losing water, if that is actually the case, right? So that's what that's about. We've got the valve and hydrant replacement that's in capital, it's almost like an operating line item, really, because as we go through and do capital work, we want to go and replace those valves and those hydrants so that we don't get, so they operate when we need to, when we need to operate them. The water meter replacement program is actually done quite well, we're now into the really tough part, where we've got some very weird water meters, so such, the trailer park is one of them, so that's what that is remaining for, and I hope to get that, that really completed. Then we've got an intake dike, we want to build around the intake for the water treatment plant, it was one of the things that was recommended to us, and we want to get that done, that's to help block any sediment or anything like that coming into the system. We've got some variable, variable fan drives that need replacement, so that's in the budget there. We've got a CL2 switchover unit that we need to replace. We have, in Glen Robinson, we did the skater upgrade, but now we find that we've, we've really run out of room inside that small building, so we want to look at expanding that building to make sure that we've, all that equipment is neatly accessible and not a mess to work in at all, because some of that, we ended up needing a little bit of extra gear to get that skater system working properly, and so it's, it's just not ergonomically useful and not efficient either, they spend too much time doing that work, so we want to expand that building. Then we have a big water relining project, so this, I apologize, I should know the street name off by heart, but there, just off Main Street, it goes back, sort of, kind of near that Canadian Tire, there's a laundry, of laundry along there, and we have a water line, sorry, it's a little bit further down from the Canadian Tire, but there's a, an actual laundry service, and we, thank you. So. So that water line really goes into really small allowances, they're very close to people's properties, it would be a very big problem if we were to get a, if we were actually to get a water break in that area, so we want to go ahead and line that before we get a break, essentially, because it's, it's not a good position. Sure. So one of the things that isn't reflected here is there is some carryover from 2022 for the hydraulic modeling, so there is $40,000 there, I think it's in the actual, maybe in the budget in front of you, but there, there should be $40,000 there, and that came out of the water relining project, as we got some better estimates as we went forward. Then this should be wastewater, so wastewater, we've got, so I think this is an older table as well, so that relining project, we actually reduced it, it's only, I believe, 160,000? I can tell you the exact number, hold on. Thank you. Yeah, so, and then the reason is, is because that the wastewater model hasn't been completed yet, so we, it was coming very close at the end of 2022, and then it was reviewed by the, the more senior engineers and found that it needed more work, so it, it's not a, we're not paying any more money, we just, there's money that we didn't spend with them in 2022 that we're going to spend in 2023, we want to get that model, you know, absolutely perfect before we go and start, start working on it, basically. So we've got that, we've got the sludge removal for, for the lagoon that we need to complete, there's also a pontoon boat that we need to use on the lagoon that needs a new motor, so that's in there as well. That's really it for wastewater.
And I think that concludes capital.
Question in general?
Yeah.
At, at what point would we discuss something like putting money towards reserves for the Alexandria Main Street project?
So I think once we get to the, to the end of the.
At the end?
At the end, and then we see where we're at, and maybe that's where we could move some money around.
Okay, thank you.
We'll keep a list going of anything that we change.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, so we'll take a break for lunch and be back here, well, soon as we finish eating, so. Okay, welcome back, everyone, and so we're going to move on to the operating, we can do it a little bit different, I'm going to run that, so we're going to, I'll tell you what page we're on, it'll take a few minutes, anybody has questions on that page or any changes, put your hand up and we'll, we'll deal with, so we're on page 17 to start. This is council budget.
Questions?
Yeah, just one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I'm assuming the deputy mayor convention expenses are lower on the proposed 2023 because of claims that go directly to the counties?
Because you were the warden, so they paid for every one of them.
Ah, okay, well, well, that was last year, this is proposed 2023.
Yeah, you're.
Right, why is it, but why is it?
Your December, your 2022 actual is 542.
But that's because it was paid by the counties, I'm assuming.
That's what I'm saying, all years are covered by the counties as well. Any further questions on that one? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember at one point, the last few months, we had talked about benefits, like, package for councillors and the council, is that still?
I don't want to take that question.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we are looking into that, Jaco, so we've asked our insurance company or benefit plan company to put together an option. At the last CAO meeting, we've also did a bit of a straw poll amongst the CAOs to see what other councils are offering, this is something that other councils are looking at offering to their council members, however, they're also looking at the option of doing, like, a benefit spending plan instead, because the cost per month for benefits, depending on the age of council members and what's exempt through OHIP, it may make more sense to do, like, a benefit plan through, like, an amount per year you can spend that we would look after rather than a, like, manual life or whatever, so it will be coming to council for consideration.
Okay, so it's not included in there, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to be there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Further questions on page 17? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to page 21. So we are in administration, so take a minute, go through, if you see something that stands out. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just on, in the revenue side of it.
Yep.
On line 5089, we have no proposed, these revenues, are we not, did we move the federal tax refund to another section?
Yes, it's moved to the Roads Department, sorry, you, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Okay.
It's moved to the Roads Department, it's now called CCB, instead of gas tax.
Perfect, thank you. And another, if I may, just I'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the expenses side, this time, the 1225 line?
Okay, we're just on the, we're just on revenues right now, so, one page at a time. Anybody else? Everything looks okay? Okay, we'll move on to the next page, Council Massey.
On the 1225 line of insurance, then I know, I know we did forecast for 20% increase, I think, that's what, that's why that's there, okay, perfect. Okay, on line 2120, we put 15,000 where we spent.
2120 is office supplies?
Yes. Could that not be lowered a little bit, or is that just, last year was, and then the same for the 2124 also, there's a big gap, there's a big increase, so are we changing the, the maintenance plan that we had before where the, some other people from downtown?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Under office supplies, bear in mind that actual is as of December 8th, okay? So there's still charges to be added to that. As far as housekeeping and janitorial, we used to have some employees who cleaned the office, we now have a contracted service.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we discussed that in camera, Council Massey, around the last agreement, and then we've also brought it to councils.
Okay.
Any others, Council Massey, on that page? Anybody else?
I got one that.
Yeah.
It's not so much the amount, it's the amount that's overdrawn, like, when we set out the budget in the year and we kind of, we set a guideline or like a reference point where we want our expenses to go, and, like, I remember back seven or eight years ago, council had put like a red flag, something if something was over 10% or 20% over expenses budgeted, but this line here, like, we had budgeted 3100, we spent 23,000, that's in 2022, and I know it's past, nothing can be done about it, it's just that these things should not happen.
But, but, what line are you talking about?
1131.
Right, but don't forget, when we talk, go ahead, though.
Sorry, there's been, where things are being charged are not necessarily right between these two, there's two, there's computer fees and equipment and computer website hosting, and if you look at the total budget of those two lines, it's 73,100, so the 70 plus the 31, if you add the actuals, it's very close to that amount, it's just where it's been charged.
Go ahead.
And so through you, Mr. Mayor, as well, Council Massey, you'll note that quarterly the treasurer does provide variance reports to council, and that's the greatest opportunity for us to discuss the variances when it comes to that, and yes, through the purchasing policy, there is a 20% plus or minus, however, we do, you know, Kim does regularly report to council anything that's coming up, I know that certainly in some of these, there's also offsetting revenue that may have been the consideration as well, or grants.
But it's not, and it's not line by line, the 20%, it's the, it's the global budget of that department, yeah. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, because the same thing on line number 2035, where there's a significant overage there, too.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Bear in mind, if you look, like, this, this is, this was a different year compared to the last two, if you look in the last two years' actuals, this line item was significantly lower because no one could go anywhere, so this year, it's kind of been a bit of a catch-up on what we've missed, but you have to look at the budget as the whole for operating as such, because some, some departments are revenue generating and some aren't, so as a whole, some might be under, some might be over, but as a whole, we're still good.
Okay, I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, there's, there's, there's a consulting and professional fees, same thing, just, I guess, same answer for 2022, 23?
Go ahead.
So, if I may, Deputy Mayor Williams, I think it's, it's best if, unfortunately, right now, we couldn't comment on exactly what's included, right? So, again, to what I said to Council Massey is, during the variance reporting is the best time for us to kind of discuss that, unfortunately, and maybe if there's anything follow-up to do with the actuals, we can, we can discuss it afterwards, but, and I'm not saying we can't discuss actuals today, but I think the discussion, the actuals should be pertaining to where we want to land with the 2023 budget, right? Not necessarily, because, like, I know within consulting, I can probably tell you what those were, and if there's anything that was going to be over budget, it was more than likely approved by council, right? So I think we just need to, to kind of, if there's anything in detail that you want to know afterwards, perhaps we can discuss it, you know, Kim and I can meet with council members if you want to talk about it, or we can bring a report to council. We usually bring a year-end report as well, through the audit, through the quarter four, so we can discuss that, too.
Okay, well, that would be helpful, actually, thank you. Okay, thanks. And then I think the last one, 2130, the 70,000 doesn't, is, well, it was 42, and I guess that's probably, I was just wondering if it was too high.
That question, yeah, because he did the, if you add the global computer fees and equipment and computer website.
Right.
They basically, kind of.
It's where it's been charged.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from other members of council? Or any member of council? Everyone's good with it? Okay, so we are moving on to page 24. So this is the other stuff, crossing guards and ambulance. Yep, go ahead, Council Massey.
Line 2024, expenses, ambulance operating costs, like, we have 3,000 there year to year to year, and the last two years I haven't got nothing, like, in 2021, we spent actually 59 bucks, and then last year or this year, 411, can we not bring that down to closer to 1,000 or 1,500? That'd be sufficient, since we're, I have no problem putting, putting, going over the budget there, no? It's just the 2%.
So the ambulance is actually, and the chief and I have been speaking about this, and I have a meeting next week with Maureen about some of these leases we have with the county, with City of Cornwall, so this is for, here in Alexandria, we lease out the space to the county or through the Cornwall, and I know that there was some significant repairs that have to be done to the garage there, and. there, and some, also some HVAC upgrades that need to be done for some humidity. So I would rather not cut that. I know we are in negotiations with the libraries, with the ambulance. We have an outdated contract with them. So I'd rather just leave it as is for now than to cut it, because I know that the chief will have some significant costs coming up.
Just, if you're not done, just tell me to slow down, I don't.
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Livestock damages, what, what is that?
Let's, go ahead, explain. You look like you're so excited to talk about the livestock evaluator.
I will not go on my rant, I promise. So the OMAFRA, so the provincial government downloads this to lower-tier municipalities. So basically, if you have livestock that are killed by a wolf or whatever, yeah. So this is just an in and an out for us. It's not supposed to cost municipalities any money. However, we are lobbying the provincial government to increase the amount of administration fees we get for administering the program. So you'll see the revenue and the expenses go out, and it's something we can't get out of, unfortunately.
I really miss the report when they used to come to us for three, three chickens.
We can do that again.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to page thirty-one. Cut, cut, cut!
I got just one, Mr. Mayor. I know the conference workshop training is that, it's very minimal there, but we always seem to have more budgeted than what actually is used. And I know some years it might be over that, but currently, the last three years hasn't.
Jacob, can we take two thousand off of that?
Yeah.
No, you can take two thousand off, but it's true.
Just at one point, Mr. Mayor, we have to start picking that little stuff to get to a little point later on.
Well, we're, I think we're, I mean, the budget as is at three point one is in this day and age. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just having a meeting with Kim. She said, you know, some of these discrepancies are COVID, numbers are down, and then all of a sudden they're up. So we're trying to go back to pre-COVID, am I correct?
So what, do we want to leave it as is?
Do, Mr.
Sorry, the, the conference, Michelle and I will never go both at a conference, so it would be shocking that we would go close to five thousand dollars. So if you want to cut a bit, it's, it's fine.
Cut it down to three?
Sure. We'll just go over the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you'll, you'll be over on some other thing.
So two thousand off. Anything else on that page? Okay, moving on to page thirty-two.
Yeah, that's the worst line. So the, it's just because the, the septic contracted services are.
Yet, pardon me? Well, it's on, yeah, the, so our septic system permits are thirty thousand, but our contracted services haven't been entered yet, but Kim just told me they're at thirty-one something. So these two usually even out at the end of the year, and it will happen again this year, so, yeah.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking at the revenues there, and, well, for the most part, they're not meeting the. Uh, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a cost center, for sure.
Right, but are they realistic? If they're not meeting their, if they're not bringing that in?
You're talking about at the top?
Yeah, the top.
Because they budgeted was eighty-five, they're at sixty-eight twenty-two with another month on there.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the clean yards, thousand dollars come, Deputy Mayor Williams, you can remove that from that ninety-five hundred, because that is automatically offset by an expense below. So that would be never something that we would charge unless.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, you know, unfortunately, like, that, it's sort of offset, so we're very close if you take that off, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Maybe just because of COVID again, but under legal fees, line twenty-two-ten, yeah, we have a thousand bucks there, and then the truck expense, two thousand there, which the last time we spent anything there was three twenty-three, and I believe that bylaw now has a new vehicle. So there's three there, and then the last two lines of that, six thousand and seventy-two oh seven, there's fifteen hundred bucks on each line that we never used.
Yeah, I just think, though, Jac, I mean, those are so small, and then all of a sudden something happens, especially with legal, you know, we could, we could, we could blow the whole budget on legal, you know?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, just, what are we going to cut it, a thousand dollars?
No, but if you add those four lines, it's minus six.
Yeah, but we can't do that. We can't take everything out.
Okay.
Unless, unless, look, again, this is a council decision, but I just, go ahead.
Sorry, and just to my point to Deputy Mayor Williams earlier, Councilor Massey, the last two lines there, they're only charged when we have to do a property standards or clean yards when it comes to residents. So that's why there's no expenditures. It's actually a good news thing.
Okay, that's good. Can I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So if we go below the septic systems, are we?
We're on page thirty-two. We haven't moved. Go ahead.
Thirty-two, okay. Septic is okay, I go there? Okay. Septic, the revenues, it always seems to be more than the actual what we propose. Can we not increase the revenue by ten? It would match reality?
It offsets, though, Councilor Massey. You'll notice in that cost center that the net effect to the taxpayers is zero. So even if you increase the amount of revenue, the amount of expenditures would be increasing, because we only charge out what we, what we pay the contractor.
Okay, okay, okay. But it would.
It doesn't do anything to the bottom line, though, because the bottom line is zero.
It's zero.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, because I was going to comment on the other two, but I ended up with a plus thirteen something.
But those numbers are wrong, right? Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
The cost is actually thirty-one, so it's negative.
Okay.
Okay. Page thirty-three. Go ahead.
Sorry. It's just that I actually read this damn stuff yesterday.
That's, that's really bad for us.
Revenues in the planning department, again, the site plan, maybe there's an explanation there. Should we not raise that revenue side again, or that's the same thing as before?
Sorry, good.
Yeah.
We never know what kind of a teaching we're going to get, so it's very, very hard to assign them.
And that's for, that's for the IHA project.
But it just, and it adds to the, it adds to the surplus that we're going to have this year, by being over.
It's, it's, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, but also, if we put more revenue, we don't need as much as the.
Okay, so what, we put in more revenue and we don't get there, then we have a minus.
But if you look historically, we've always been over thirty-two thousand, that's what I'm getting at. But anyways, it is, if you guys are comfortable with that, that's all.
Also, our site plans will, probably won't be as high as it was before, because Bill twenty-three, we have no site plan applications for residential over, up to twelve units, so we're not going to have more, for sure.
Further questions or comments on that, that page? Moving on to thirty-seven. So this is community services. Just at the top end, it says user fees insurance, and we have thirty-one hundred coming in this year, nothing proposed for next year? Or is that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, those are the insurance fees that we're collecting off of rentals. So it's an in and an out. The money that comes in goes right back out to half penny. So no matter what the number again, it's an in and an out.
It's just an in and out, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Special grants, forty-one oh seven. What's the seventy-five hundred?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So that is actually the funding that we get for Canada Day. We disperse it back to the recreation associations. It helps pay for some fireworks or other things like that.
Okay, so that's why it doesn't show. And then the special events, that's broken, is that broken down anywhere else?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the special events, that's usually the business and community gala awards, awards gala. So that would be the line where we would do the Meet Me on Main Street project, as well as having an event to, to recognize all of our great volunteers or our community.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Further questions or comments? I'm waiting for you to nod, Councilor Massey.
Well, I have to, but, no.
No, go ahead.
Just, sorry. Line twenty-three-one, on the expenses side, should we not raise that, that line July first and Christmas, expenses five thousand? Because, again, externally, it's over. And I know it's contrary to what we want to do, but at least we would have a little bit closer to the reality when we budget for things.
I would suggest leaving it like that this year to see how things work out in the community. I know that I had one association that's already indicated that they're not going to be doing certain events, so I'd rather leave it that way, and next year we could revisit that if that works.
Yes, remember, just because it makes it more organized on.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Now, the, the Canada Day funding, how's that distributed?
So in the past, a large part of it used to go to the Lions, and there was a little bit that would go out to different associations when we were able, if there was any money that was left over.
Okay, it's just in Maxwell, we used our capital to do our, or operating to do our Canada Day?
Yeah.
So that's not included on this.
So as you can imagine, the festivities and through you, Mr. Mayor, at Island Park are quite large. So they, there's a lot of cost to, to bring everything. So we do support it a little bit more due to that.
Further questions or comments? I like the contribution to the Glengarry Sports Hall payment, four thousand and one dollars. Okay, so on to page thirty-eight. So the top end is, we never really spend the amount, but.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that falls under community services, but it's actually managed by the, the water department. And there is, there are some upgrades that are supposed to be done to the UV systems. So I think that that budget will get eaten up this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Massey?
Okay, so on the, thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the libraries expense section, twenty-fifty-six, it seemed that we could add four thousand there, and then maybe take away the four thousand from the Alexandria library expense. And then we, then we could cut the building maintenance and supplies by four thousand, so we ended up at the end of the day at minus four.
Go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned, Councilor Massey, I'm, I'm actually meeting with the CAO of the county next week. There's some significant changes that I think you're going to see come through council when it comes to the libraries in North Glengarry, some of the lease agreements we have. So I think I'd rather leave the budget as is for now. And then once we negotiate, I know all of the lower tiers in SDG are looking at a, at a consistent lease agreement, which is not what's happening right now. So we'll need to look at, you know, who's paying for what at each of the libraries when it comes to maintenance, hydro, gas, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd rather leave as is, as well, we are renegotiating the contract for the revenue side. So very, it may very well offset, depending on what changes in the budget.
Is it because we're deciding on a rate?
Pardon me?
We're trying to decide on a rate today?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't commit to changing anything in that, because it is tied to that lease agreement. However, I'm committing to council that we're going to.
It should be in our favor to next.
Agreed. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor.
This is a bit of an aside, but since we're talking about libraries, just to let you know, the counties did a feasibility study, and one of the recommendations in it is the possible closure of the Maxwell Library. So heads up, everybody, we may have another fight on our hands. I just wanted to mention that because it's important.
What other libraries?
There was the recommended closure of another one. I can't, off the top of my head, remember what it is, and I don't want to say the wrong names, so, but Maxwell was definitely mentioned. And that would leave us with one library.
But they did, but they did say in that report, it's at Alexandria, and Del Keith.
Yeah, it, the, the report actually appears to claim that Del Keith is actually a library.
Not their library.
And, 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 yeah, exactly. And it's so, we're going to, you know, and here it is run solely by volunteers, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to go back to the libraries, there's an expense that's not recorded for the Alexandria library, because that was just completed. It was the order of a door at the library. It actually failed at the hinges, so we had to replace the whole door. So that was near four thousand dollars. So just to indicate that that.
Good to know, thank you.
Will be recorded.
Okay, we will move on to page forty-four. What? That was a big sigh, eh?
You know, right?
I didn't know everybody.
We heard you.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Revenues, economic development, that twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar, is that not repeating itself in twenty-twenty?
The SDNG incentive program.
So that's an in and an out again.
Okay, but.
So the funds that we receive, we give them out to the applicant.
Okay, so that.
It's not our money.
So it's not in the budget.
Okay, so we cannot budget for that?
No. We never know how many applicants would be coming in.
Okay. Okay. I'll just finish my little bit. Expenses, the ten fifteen, part-time wages were sixty-nine, and we had budgeted, or we budgeting eleven-four.
So that was the ambassador position, and we had the corresponding revenue come in, wage subsidy.
Okay. Okay. And then what about the sponsorship? Can we not drop that down to five thousand?
So that was actually the category that we were taking the funding for the trees out of. So if we remove or reduce that, we won't have as much money for the tree project.
Okay, so why do we name that sponsorship?
Because that's just where it came out of.
Yeah.
Can, can we not, you know, the last meeting we had of council, I think, where we're looking for the reserve for the tree rehabilitation reserves? That should be out of there.
Does it really matter, or?
Well, it, it does matter, because if I'm starting to look how much money we have in for the tree replanting for twenty-twenty-three, I don't, I'll never.
Five thousand.
Plus last year.
No. Nope. He didn't spend it last year.
Well, yeah, but that should stay in reserve?
It was already gone.
Okay, so we've got ten thousand this year then?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that category was created specifically for council to be able to allot amounts to organizations that didn't qualify to the community grants.
Right.
So if we take ten thousand dollars, that doesn't leave any funding for any other opportunity.
So that's, that's not the tree program then?
Five thousand is the tree and five thousand is sponsorship.
I would prefer that, to see that separate.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, can you make a separate line? I'll just...
Yeah, just because if somebody asks me, okay, how much money there is left in the pot, that's it.
Okay, I'll make a separate line there.
Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, I don't recall us covering this, the wage subsidy of fifty thousand for twenty-twenty-three, where is that coming from?
There is none. There are no plans at this point. We were expecting to have the opportunity to run for a grant, and that did not happen. There was no grant that was put out. So I thought, at this point, the position is unfunded.
Okay. So there was a corresponding number with that, right? Under active part-time wages?
Exactly.
Right. That's why that one's down.
That was, no, I'm looking, sorry, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-three proposed, right? And then part-time wages is down to eleven.
Right.
So as you say, unfunded, so we have a hole there that is yet to be filled?
So I follow direction, and I was advised just to fund for the active officer and corresponding workers for staff.
Okay.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. I just, that would seem to me, we have a hole.
So if you're asking me if we have an ambassador or a coordinator, no, we don't at this point.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Massey.
On the expenses side, and I do mention that to you, Councilor, before, so after the CIP grant, improvement grant, which has been a very great program too, and I gotta say, at the beginning, seven, eight years ago, when we put that in, I never expected the very beautification of our small town, how much it needed it. But being that we ask our citizen to tighten the belt and put more money in the pot, could we not lower that for this year alone, twenty-twenty-three, to forty thousand, and then just limit the applicants? So we get a, we give a little break to our own taxpayer money? Is that something that council would be willing to do? I know that we have a lot of projects that have been done, and this, this year with the contractors on high demand and the high price of materials, I forecast a smaller ask year, so if we go back to twenty and then review the program next year and say we could go to sixty again, or, or fifty? It's just that it would give a, you know, because it's the taxpayers that fund this program, and now we're asking them to fork out three-point-one percent more in taxes? If we can cut that, that, that wound by point six percent or something?
Point three.
Yeah, plus the two and whatever. So that would go under the three, and if we save them after percentage, it's after percentage.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to advise, there are some unrecognized expenses to this. We did cash out just before Christmas, one of the last projects that we did, and I was speaking with Natalie, and she's already got three applications that are in the works, and they would be closer to the maximum amount if they're fully funded. So we're looking at about thirteen thousand dollars each, so that would basically eat up the forty thousand dollars at this point.
Which would be okay normally, your forty grand, we have to do our share too. Governments in difficult situation will lower some programs to not hurt as many people as they can. It's a give, given, go, yours or...
Well, I think we're doing quite well, Jacque. Seven percent is, you're seeing, you're seeing places like Toronto and these places that are going up at five percent. You're seeing in, I believe, one of the Dundas's that's at five, over five percent, and we're coming in at three-point-one, considering the fact that we're not getting any, any MPAC assessment. So I think we're doing our job.
Yeah, I know.
And just, I know, to just start cutting programs that we've been successful, but again, if you, there's enough people that are, that are in favor of it, then that's what we do.
Councilor, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we have to be really careful about cutting a program that has, has been very successful for North Glengarry. Not only has it managed to sort of beautify a lot of our commercial establishments and really make a difference on our main streets, but it has also supported the local economy by, by hiring contractors and all of these projects, they go out, they purchase all of their materials that they need locally, and, you know, for that reason alone, I think, you know, we can't, we can't, and this program, you know, we've had trouble with it since COVID because of, you know, costs and everything being shut down, but it, if you go take in twenty thousand dollars out of it, it'll compromise the program because it'll say to people that it's not as important as, as it really is, and we probably need to find ways to actually support this program better in terms of getting the word out that, you know, these dollars are available. It leverages huge sums of money because more inevitably is spent on these projects than we actually ever put into it. So I, I'm absolutely not in favor at all of reducing that sum.
Go ahead, Ann.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, also to have council note that if you look at the total economic development ask at the bottom line, if you look at the twenty-twenty-two budget, the total ask revenue expenses, we were at two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. What we're proposing here is a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. That's a significant decrease overall. So cutting into the programs or the possibility of offering to the community at this point, I think, I think we really did our part on this, on this budget, bringing it down.
For the quick, go ahead, Councilor Kada.
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where the program has gone on to side streets and, you know, dwellings in the country and this and that, I, I don't see the point of that. I, you know, if it was all Main Street and the main, Main Streets of everywhere, all the small towns and everything, I could, I buy that, but I, I don't see, it's almost like trying to get rid of the money so we can get it again next year or something, to give it to people inside streets, et cetera. We were told that the last one there was a heritage property. I, I looked up that there are only four heritage properties in North Glengarry.
So...
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a difference between a listed property and a non-designated property. So that's according to the Heritage Act, and I'd be more than happy to go over that with you. So we do have, there's a very big distinction between both, and part of the CIP, for those properties to qualify, there are very stringent guidelines for us, for us to be able to list them as non-designated properties. So in all fairness, what we've seen happening, and you know Natalie can attest to that, is the property, like you're speaking of, the last one that was subsidized by the CIP, it's garnered interest from other property owners, and it really ends up beautifying a whole area that, you know, albeit off Main Street, but still part of the commercial environment of the town. So we've, we've seen huge successes with that.
Isn't a heritage property, isn't it governed by regulations to keep it looking heritage?
So there's a difference between a designated and a non-designated, but the, there are still some guidelines that we are obligated to follow, and we do follow those.
Okay. Anyway, still, I say Main Street's great. I, I'm not with the others, so I would be with Jacque in, in cutting it back.
Okay, so we've been asked by, by two members to cut it by twenty thousand. Are there any others in favor of cutting it by twenty thousand? Okay, so we'll keep that there. Any other, anything else on this page? Okay, moving on to page forty-eight. So we're now in the Recreation Department. This is Maxville Sports Complex.
Thank you. On the expenses side, unless I know some kind of improvement, on line twenty-fifty-six, hydro for the Maxville Sports Complex, we always like, last year we had budgeted ninety, then we went to sixty this year, and now we're at seventy-one. That's still, as of December eighth, can we not raise that by twenty? So we don't look like we're always over, over, underfunded?
So one of the, the projects, and actually, Councilor Martin and I were talking about it, is a possibility of refurbishing the lights on the soccer pitch, or adding lights to the soccer pitch and finishing up anything that has to do with metal highlight. So we're hoping to have some efficiencies when it comes to hydro in that respect.
Now, we have any efficiencies from the new, the new condenser that we put in?
HVAC.
HVAC, sorry.
Well, I think that we may be cooling in the summer, so that might offset some of the costs.
Right.
So for sure, I think that's going to be neutral coming out of there.
Right.
But I, I'm not so concerned about that line. I think the line that I'm more concerned about is the building maintenance. If you take a look at that, the building maintenance, I've asked for a significant increase, and that's line twenty-three sixty-six, because for the last few years, we've gone way over budget, and what I've noticed now is whenever we have repairs, it's costing us double for the parts, and labor is extremely dear. So it's not that we're doing more work to the building, it's just that everything has been costing more money. So, but rest assured, we're really keeping our, our electrical and our propane consumption in the facility.
Anybody have anything else? Councilor Martin?
Is work chopped in training? Is there, I don't, four thousand dollars?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, during COVID, we did very minimal training, we did what we could online. Now we have, we're seeing more and more training opportunities, but even the online ones are costing what in-person training used to cost. So we're at a point now, we have about thirty staff overall in our Recreation Department, that we're going to be continuing with the training opportunities, and that'll be across the board for all of the, the budgets that you'll be seeing.
Okay. Councilor Massey?
Yeah, just the actual to December, if we look at the proposed budget of twenty-twenty-two, a total of two-eighty, two-eighty-four, we had three-fifty-two.
What, what line are you on?
The last one, the complete at the bottom, the total Magdill Square Complex, so we're off, we're underfunded by seventy thousand?
Yeah, but it's offset by probably
Revenue.
A lot larger revenues.
Not at the end of the year. It's, the hole is bigger than it was that we budgeted for. Just the fact that we have to, when we do expenses, and I know, it's just that it affects the whole account when we go down. So if we put the hydro at twenty thousand more, and in the building, another twenty thousand more, it'd be more realistic, it would be forty thousand, and then we wouldn't end up with a monster deficit.
So we'll be at four percent then?
But if that's the, that's what we're supposed to do.
I don't get you.
No, no, but like if you're, if you have a business like this, and you run this like this, and you're overbudgeted by, or you overspend, or you're under revenue by thirty percent, you're going to close your doors. That's the only, if we don't, anyways.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, just to mention, I know that the hydro is bothering you. I think that if I went back to the bills, what's going to happen is I'm going to end up with probably a December bill from the year before, because if I look at the, the year before, it was forty-seven hundred, forty-seven thousand dollars. So I'm thinking, I probably got a December bill in in January, and I got thirteen months of billing in a cycle instead of having just a twelve-month cycle. So I think that that, that's probably what happened. I've had that happen for a few years for the facilities.
Councilor Manley?
Yeah, I just... I think we have to look at the big picture here more here, and I, I think we're trying to, you know, drill down into some, some small stuff or whatever that, but I think, I think overall, we have to look at the big picture, the bottom line.
Okay. Anything further on that page? And on the other revenue, what was the difference last year?
So actually, that's money that came in from the Lions Club for the water fountain and the skate park engineering design that was paid by the Alexandra Recreation Association.
So it's an in and out?
It's an in and out. And since we're in revenue, I'd like to point out that the hall rental also includes the five thousand dollars that we received from the Glengarry Encore
Okay, that's right.
for that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anything in the, excuse me, the Recreation Budget for a Recreation Master Plan?
So I was not asked to budget for that. That would have gone under capital, most likely.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a significant consulting budget. Deputy Mayor Williams, that if we approve that at strategic planning, we can pull that from there, for sure.
Excellent.
Questions or comments? Yep, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, we just again, Ann, part-time, we're, we're way down. Do we get an extra full-time? Because we're not. We're actually down a little bit to actual for wages as well. How are we managing there?
So we, we've been looking at a way to prioritize how we're going to be using staff across some facilities, so we're hopeful, hopeful that that'll be quite, quite reduced.
Okay, this is just sort of an overall gutting. Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? On to page fifty-six. Starting to white knuckle there, Chief Roy, when we get to this one?
Not at all, Mr. Mayor.
Just for information, Chief, fees other municipalities, I'm presuming that's mutual aid, is that, am I correct in that?
That would be automatic aids that we have, that's the, the fees that we, we cover from North Stormont or South Glengarry.
Come on, we can't let them off that easy. Karma, come on.
Okay, okay. Don't want to disappoint. 2270 fire fees. So, is that what you were just referring to?
So this would be the opposite. So we have automatic aid agreement with Champlain Township for Del Keith area. So those are fees. So we never know what the fees are. It all depends on call volume. So the area that they cover, we pay the fees that responsible for 417 as well in that Del Keith area.
So historically, are they as low as they appear to be? Can we reduce that number?
Historically, we've seen it sometimes in 27,000. So it all depends on, on the number of call volumes, especially with 417. With the 417 calls, there's actually revenue that we get back from MTO that offsets that cost as well. So sometimes, so it does vary in terms of, yeah. We've always had it at the 30,000. Just, that's the basic cost that we, that we assume for that, for that automatic aid agreement in that area.
Right. Okay, thank you.
No further questions on that one? Okay, we are looking at community emergency management. It's pretty small, so I think we're okay. And on to page 64. Yes, go ahead.
On the first line, 1010, on the expense side, a million dollars wages. Actual is 347.
Yeah. Kim?
It's very, very hard to figure out exactly what the season will bring and where the roads department will be charged actuals. So the total wages for the roads department and benefits is in that one line. However, in the other budgets for sidewalk maintenance and winter control and plowing, they will have no budgets, but they will have actuals charged. It's just too hard to try to figure out an allocation between the different areas of public works. So the whole budget is in this line.
So historically, last three years, we've seen around the 350,000, but?
No. So, go ahead.
So Counselor Massey, if you just go to the next page of your budget document, you'll actually see on road maintenance wages, so the, the 30121010, you'll see that there's actuals of 273,000, but no budget. So that's what the treasurer's explaining, is that the total amount of the public works wages are included on the admin, and then the actuals are throughout. That's how we, that's how we do it. It's difficult per year to figure out based on the winter and the summer seasons.
Tim?
I just wanted to say, in the work plan, I, I work with man-hours. So essentially, it all goes into one bucket, and they sort it out later in terms of the budget. But in terms of efficiency, I'm looking at actual, actual man-hours and where we're putting the guys on an hourly basis.
You meant person hours?
Person hours?
Man, show for humanity.
Yes, Kim?
I just want counsel to be aware, there was a reallocation within these two budgets. Under 1431014010 for contracted services, that proposed budget has gone from 600 to 25,600 for ditching and brushing. However, under its page 66, under 1430465190, which is hardtop maintenance, patching and washouts, 25,000 was taken from the budget there. So it's just a reallocation to make it, so we can get the brushing and ditching done that's needed.
Tim?
That's the, that's, that was, that change was made late because we made the decision to pull the excavator out. I apologize. It is a bit more of a guess than I would normally put in, because I only have budget numbers based on our, our ditching for drainage. So, so it is very much an estimate. Hardtop is going to take some other work in there, but that's the intent, to essentially take it from operating, do what we can to do that hardtop maintenance, because there are some budget items in there. So bridges is, for example, you'll probably notice that bridges is, the actuals is much lower than what was budgeted. And I'll probably try and pull from those to, to work that one out. I can bring back a report later. It was just a very late decision to pull that excavator and say, no, we're, we're going to do the, the hardtop maintenance from, from operating budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Madden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page, I'm sawing 64, looking at 1502 under expenses, roads limited finance charges. One, we're going up pretty good, but last year was about half of what was budgeted, is the 82 that we have on the line this year. Accurate, do we know?
That 82 is based on those two tandems. So there's 64,000 that was added to that budget line to finance those. And that was that report that came to council when we're deferring it. But like I said, when we were talking earlier, there's other three long-term debt items that have come off, and they total close to 90.
So are we safe to be under that?
No, I, that is, that's, that's what it's going to cost us if we finance it.
Yep. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at 2125 and 2130. Those are both significant jumps, just looking for...
Sorry, which, I'm sorry.
2125 and 2130.
So that's the same thing. So when I looked at this, I decided that I would keep our, our regular budget number. And the reason is, is I, I want to change the entire how we work during the summer. And I expect really to spend, spend all that money and get our production done, I'm going to say. So we're not doing, or I don't believe at the moment that we're doing the amount of kilometers that we should be doing. And I think this reorganization is really going to utilize all that. And I think where we, where we've not spent the money in previous years and kind of saved that money, we end up spending it from sort of the life of that asset, if that makes sense. So that's why the numbers are, are why they are, why I decided to leave it like that.
Maybe, oh, Kim?
Sorry, I just want you to notice that we have, under the roads materials and supplies, was added a chunk of change for sign inspection program fees.
Right. Counselor Massey?
Also, to that line, the 2130, it says computer fees and equipment. Like, is there any way we can separate the two? Or is it equipment for computers? Or what is it? Like, that seemed, it's, they're not, should not be problem.
Is the equipment, computer equipment?
Yeah.
What I have here is equipment purchase of 40,000. This is for, I believe, the AVL units for fleet. There was $12,000 in monitoring costs that were not in the budget in 2021 or 2022. Then we have a reporting equipment and software of 4,500. And then we have fleet monitoring costs of 12,751. So, I mean, if, if you want to have those systems onboard, they need to be in the budget.
I think his question was more, it said equipment and computer. So, but they're all related to, they're all related to equipment.
Present equipment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So going forward, there really should only be, it really should just be laptops and that sort of stuff. But what happened there was there was, it really should have been a capital item. My predecessor made a commitment with the counties and that, that to move forward with the AVL program. And so me coming in in December 2021, I thought that was already paid for in the 2021 budget, and it wasn't. So that's how that kind of ended up, ended up in there. So in the future, that would be broken out into a, a capital item. There is, and we've chased down what the ongoing costs should be for that AVL, which would go on that line item, but just as essentially the, the software, which is a much lower cost than...
Maybe rename, sorry, Mr. Mayor, maybe instead of computer fees and equipment, maybe communication or reporting devices or, if that, something that, it just sounds 90s.
I can talk to finance about it.
Okay.
Basically, we have designated codes for things. So computer fees and equipment is 2130, the last four digits. And it's 2130 throughout the budget by all the departments. So if we want to see what our costs are for that type of thing, it's all in one. We can run the report for 2130 and see what it's costing us. So that's why it's kind of in that category.
Thank you. Any further questions on that page? Moving on to 65. Deputy Mayor?
I remember when I first got on council, there used to be a miscellaneous category in every single budget. It drove me crazy. So now that miscellaneous seems to be landing in materials and supplies. And computers and equipment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to speak to that. There was, there, there has been a mentality in several places I go, have been, that you charge things to where you have budget, not necessarily to where they should be charged. So it's been very clear that you charge it where it needs to be charged. And sometimes it's over and sometimes it's under. But that gives us the basis to reallocate funds the next year to where we need it from where we don't need it. So I've stressed to charge where it's actually meant to be. So sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, but it's, it's reality at least.
Miscellaneous.
Can we change it to that, just so we can drive her nuts for another year? Further questions on that page?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I do a council miscellaneous?
Yo, sure. Further questions or comments? Moving on to 66. It looks like all these budgets are exactly as the budget from 2022. Questions or comments? How's our budget looking so far for what we've spent in the last little bit on snow removal and, so should we be increasing that?
Yeah, if we look at, I don't know if we have, are we down to the fuel line item? Oh, yeah. So fuel line item, that was accurate as of December 8th. And we ran the report again, and it was like, well over. I, I put it up to 220, and it was well over. It was, I think, two...
Three?
On December, yeah, so it's... I, I don't know what to do.
You're really eating to our surplus here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they do something.
If we took Jacob Schuess.
Moving on to page 67. Again, budgets are almost exactly, well, we got rid of all the expenses at 62 Kenyon, so there's a savings.
Where did they go?
Over 70. Questions? Going once, twice. Page 68, RARE. So our, our proposed revenues are, you're proposing to be 50K under, or actually going to be more than 50K under what we're already at? Is that, is that commodities? That we're already seeing that happen?
Yes, yeah. Jessica put this together based on, on what she's seen. She has a fairly good eye of what the commodities are going to do and tries to stockpile to sell later if, if we need to.
Right, okay. Yes, go ahead.
The, did we replace the baler recently? Or is that old and breaking down all the time? Do you know? Because we replaced something.
I think it was the baler, but about five years ago.
Well, I'm just wondering if we can reduce that number, if it's relatively newish.
Which, which one?
Oh, sorry, I should tell you that. 2160. So it's 6,000, and if we're not using it, it's a fairly big number. 2160.
4,000? No, we can take four off.
Yeah.
Anything else on those pages? Yes, go ahead.
I know, like, I know you mentioned that we'll get the expenses, revenues reported quarterly. Don't really think I saw that, but anyways. Just, I just want to give ads off to, a good job been done on the, for the, for the first time in the last two years, since about seven or eight years, on the revenue side. We do, whoever's managing that plans does an extremely nice job to increase our revenue by a lot. Like, if you look at the, five years ago, it was not that good. So now we're actually, I think we're making money?
No, 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 no. We're losing less.
Yeah, we're losing, yes. But you know, like last year, we had revenues and anyways, we're, we're doing a very good job on the revenue. So just, yeah, pass that along to all the staff at RARE, too. They're doing a good job.
Anything else on that page? Okay, page 69. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you. What line was I looking at here? 2367. It's sort of historically low. Never over more than $1,000, it looks like.
Sorry, what line item is that?
Line 2367.
We can take 4,000 off of there.
It's, it's only an issue if it, you know, if something happens, right? So we just carry it and transfer it.
What could happen?
We, we carry it and transfer it to reserve. So if there was something that happened, I may have to make, it just means I may have to bring a report and say, whatever it is broke down, we need to spend over, you know, say the baler broke down and it's going to cost $6,000 to replace it, I'll bring a report and say that's what we've got to do. I'll bring a report and say that's what we gotta do.
Kim?
This was increased to basically, uh, allow for $5,000 of recycling bin, bins. They were used to be in capital, which makes no sense. So, the 5,000 was added to the operating line.
For, thanks, alrighty.
Recycling bins.
Cancel that last four.
No, we've, sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite realize that was this line item. Um, so that, we're, we've been trying to stretch our recycling bins for as long as we can. And, uh, they're, they're not gonna make it till 2025 with the ones that we've got. Um, there is a possibility on this that, uh, cause South Glengarry apparently have a, like, they did a misorder one year and have a, a whole bunch of them full that have limited, uh, logoing on the side. So, there's also a possibility that we may be able to get some at a reduced rate. The other thing to keep in mind with this as well is our expenses. Uh, we get a large proportion of that back from, um, the Blue Box Program. Um, and that'll keep on going up until our transition date. So, our, our, they take basically what our expenses are in the daily call and, uh, we get a percentage back. The other thing to keep in mind with that is it's two years in arrears. So, uh, you know, it throws our revenues off by a lot because we don't actually know. You know, it, it's two years ago and it depends on, it also depends on what other municipalities spent, right? Because they get a lump of money and they break it up as a percentage based on what every municipality is spending. And, uh, you know, and so we never really know what our revenues are gonna be on a year by year, which, which hurts us a little bit.
We're gonna take two off of that, uh, budget, just cause, uh, you didn't sell me 10 on that.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
Okay, but are you kidding? Are you are?
No, we are taking 2,000 more off. Yeah, no, just, it'll be 45 instead of 65. Okay, next page, 70.
Hey, look at that, no materials and supplies, yippee.
Questions or comments? Page 71. No, too late. Go ahead. We can tell we're getting near the end.
Just, just cover material. I'm just curious, what happened there? Why did we double and, I mean, literally triple over a couple of years? Anyone know?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, there's some cover operations going on at Glen Roberts, Robertson at a cost of $10,000 coming up.
Coming up. At $10,000, well, we got 25 in there.
It started at 15.
Oh, I see. On top of 10, over 31 actual for last year. That's what I'm looking at, where we tripled, not necessarily in the budget, just in actual, we tripled out.
Through you, Mr. Bat. So, it's, it's based on the closure plan that, uh, J2PG, like our consulting for the time gave us. So, it's, uh, it would be worth talking to them to get it, see if we can get this under control a little bit more regular. But, uh, I think we're, from talking with Dean and looking at our plans, it's just, we need to get on top of this. It's what the ministry wanted, so it's what we really have to do. It's part of, um, uh, um, yeah, it's, it's just part of our, our reports from, uh, J2PG and what we, what we really had to do this year.
Go ahead, yeah.
Have a, a very specific material, like, are we required to put clay on it? Or are we allowed to just cover it for interim cover?
No, and, and one of the things that we may look at is even taking the, um, from our brushing and ditching. That's part of why I want to use our interrupts. We can take that and use that as cover material.
Exactly what I was gonna say. Good, thank you.
Okay. Sure. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, just quickly, uh, closer costs. Do we not put something away every year? There's nothing budgeted this year for the eventual closing.
Next line is 50 grand transferred to reserves, that's for closure.
That's. So, why do we have the closure? Oh, that's closure costs, actual, what we actually spent on, on work, okay. And the transfer to reserves is the money that is going in for, for eventual closures.
This year is for transfer to reserves, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, waste collection, page 71. Mostly all contracted services. Questions? Page 72, drains. Oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. This, um, the page in your actual handout, the subtotals are wrong on the, the drainage loan lines. It was a copy paste error on my part, but the total budget is correct. It's just this presentation in your handout. So, this will be corrected in the final version of the budget, but it looks weird in what you have, okay?
Questions on drains? Page 78, waterworks. Sorry, go ahead.
Hang on just one second. Um, but, uh, I'm assuming, uh, Tim, that line 6150 municipal drain maintenance is what you're referring to in terms of getting that, needing to get that work done? That's a significant increase there.
Sorry.
26150?
The.
Municipal drain maintenance?
Uh, so this one, I mean, Kim, I don't know if you wanna take this one, but it's, uh, the, the drainage is a, isn't in and out. We charge back the, the, um.
The amounts.
Yeah, we charge back the amounts.
To the landowners.
To the landowners, like whoever's in the catchment area.
So, the, whether that number's accurate or not doesn't really matter then?
Well, they might know what's coming up this year.
237, I think that equate, that.
I see, okay. Alright, yeah.
So, uh, waterworks. These budgets are hard to look at, uh, to know what, uh. You know, like you're. Yes, go ahead.
Earlier in the day, I think we were gonna discuss, uh, taking maybe 100,000 dollar from reserve adding in, on page 75 to our capital thing. We said we would go back to it.
Yeah, can we finish the?
Okay, yeah, just because we did capital, we're jumping over capital, but.
But we're just gonna finish the operating.
The operating and then we'll come back. Nothing on page 78. Page 79. Under, um, wages, the wages were in 20, 2020, 293, 283. We're on 1010, 931010. And now we're proposing to go down to 70. Is that a reallocation to another area?
So, you're 931010?
Yeah. 931010, wages. 2020, we were 293, 283, 298, 295, 277.
I think, I think this is a result of our, uh, the licenses of the new guys that we've got and the staff changeover. Cause we've had Puna leave and we've got two lower ranked guys.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on page 79? So, postage, we haven't spent any money on postage and we still have 4,100 in it, but. Page 80. Page 82. We're not still paying on 943010, the EOS rental? I mean, that was when we first started our turn and it didn't do anything.
Well, then it's not around anymore.
And it's, I mean, we're only paying 250, which we haven't spent, but. Number 943010. I mean, it's a small amount.
We need to cut it?
No, don't cut it, but just, let's get it off the, cause that EOS rentals.
It looks like we paid something in 2021, but might have been.
It was like an aerator there, uh, type thing.
Yeah. No. No, 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 not those. Right, that's right. We had it there to try and aerate to get the water moving. Didn't work. It was a good.
That was a current or something.
Yeah. It was a current, that's what that was. It was, we had it on the island and it sent a current out into the. We killed 11 people with it, but it was fine. Oh, I forgot, I'm on, eh? I'm, I'm going to jail tomorrow. Can you, can you go back and edit that? Okay, uh, and that's it. Okay, so, right now, we're, all we're doing is removing, uh, 8,000. Jacques had, uh, wanted to, to take 100 off, 100,000 off of monies that we were. It doesn't affect the budget at all, but 100,000 off monies.
Budget, but it doesn't affect the tax, right? Yes, it does, it's.
It doesn't, no, it's, it's.
Okay, gold paid at 76?
76.
Not 76, sorry, 75. So, at the bottom, there's a funding source for, uh, that's the, uh, budget roads department, art top and something. So, there's 1,000,000.506444 that comes from the tax base. And the reserves is 487. So, in that North Glengarry or, there's a big fund that we have, a million dollars that we, yeah. So, if we take 100 grand from that, that would.
We need that money for the lagoons.
Okay, yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying that we could alleviate the pressure a little bit, but.
Are you talking about the money from the sale of the?
Sale of the, uh.
The IHE program.
Of, yeah, for that.
But we are gonna sell the, uh, Kenyon office, so we could replace the money, put it back in there and take another grand there.
Maybe, I'm sort of hoping that we can maybe discuss that at strap planning time.
Yeah, yeah.
Strategic planning time or whatever?
We have, we have significant capital coming up, Council.
The plan is to benefit in the future, the taxpayer, but it's our year for everyone. The gas is up, the ice grows up, the food is up. And if we can alleviate that pressure, to me, I don't know, just, just saying.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yes, so earlier I brought up, um, the notion of, of putting something aside for the Alexandria Main Street project. It's gonna be very expensive, um, and in the millions and millions of dollars, I would think. And so, I think we should, we need to start putting some money away. Uh, do you think that there's gonna be enough coming in that we'll, we'll be able to lot for? Will that, that, that can go in reserves? I'd like to see a specific reserve for that.
Like, perhaps that's a strat plan.
Yeah. I think, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, um, the provincial government has really harmed us with this, this assessment freeze, right? So, not, you know, not only a CPI went up and the cost of everything, but now we're taxed with that, right? So, that would be around 280 to 300,000 dollars of additional revenue that we would get in through that phased in values. And I think, you know, we do have the sale of 6390 Main. Um, I know there's some other properties that we were bringing. We had committed to, uh, Councilor Caddell to bring a comprehensive list of all the properties. Maybe we sell some other vacant land we have, um, now that we know we have development coming into Maxwell, Alexandria and the rural communities that we can kind of do through strategic planning to look at, you know, the lagoon project, um, the main street project. I know, uh, Tim and I are working with, uh, the county on that project and, uh, there is detailed design happening. However, that's all the contingent on provincial and federal money. So, um, we'll have a better idea probably in the next six months around what exactly that budget looked like as well and what our commitment is from North Glengarry. So, I agree with you 100%. We need to start putting money away, um, but I think we need better information to see what exactly that looks like. And then what we have, I know we're redoing some, uh, detailed design as well on the lagoon project. So, in the next six months, council should have those two main projects coming to you. We can then look at the amount we have in those reserves for the major capital and we can set aside some funds for both.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, Kim, what's, uh, what's it look like when you take the 8,000 off?
7.89, I'm kidding. 3.04.
Yep.
I'm gonna go back to Councilor Massey's point. And I'm not suggesting a huge amount, but with that eight, if we took 50,000 dollars from the reserve we have set aside, which would be replaced by the sale of another property that's currently listed, rough numbers gives us 58,000 dollars. It would bring us down to somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.3 percent plus minus instead of 3.1. We're not doing any harm to ourselves. We're helping the taxpayer to a degree. We are delivering a budget that's as lean as we possibly can and we're alleviating as much pain as we possibly can.
Okay, let's hear from everybody, go ahead.
Sorry, just to that point, I'd like to make it very simple and clear for myself and, uh, the treasurer. Which budget would you propose? Are you proposing that in that roads budget that we offset, like, increase the amount for the reserve and decrease the tax base amount? Councilor Madden, like, I just wanna be specific, which.
Well, and I think that's probably the place to do it because it's the, the biggest amount. Now, I say that wherever, wherever it makes sense to come from reserve, cause we had set that aside. I'm looking at the, the special reserve that we had set up.
Agreed.
If we're allowed to do that.
My concern with pulling it out of that million is that our treasurer has set that aside in an actual separate bank account so we can earn specific interest to that. So my recommendation would be to pull it out of another, like infrastructure reserve that we have sitting there because that's just sort of a paper reserve. That amount is actually, like, it's just more complicated for the journal entries for the, for the auditors, et cetera.
Fair enough.
So my recommendation, if council is willing or wanting to take that 50,000, that Kim and I could propose a different reserve for it to come from rather than that special general capital.
Could that be replaced with monies from the sale of the buildings currently listed?
Agreed, absolutely agreed, yeah.
So it's, it's replaced, it's just alleviating a little bit of pain right now and it puts us back to the same position after the fact.
I don't have any problem doing that. I just want council to be very aware that with the current fleet budget, all those items for long-term debt, there is no long-term debt charges for 2023. They will all hit in 2024. So I, I just want you to be aware that, um, your reserves are kind of getting to be sacred.
Understood.
Agreed, however, the, the current sale of the 63 Kenyon plus 90 Main are not in the current budget. So we're not, we won't be any less or, or minus on the reserve side. Sorry to disagree with you, Kim.
Deputy Mayor?
Right, yes, so I see what you're saying. We are going to be receiving revenue off of that. I just, you know, it's, times, times are tough. You know, we don't have that assessment. For what it's worth, I, I, I'm not comfortable reducing the tax rate by compromising our reserves. I, I know, I know you say it's not actually going to do that, but that's in fact what we're doing.
Jeff? Brian?
I agree with Karma. You know, to be taking money out of reserves unless it's really necessary, you know, to cover capital expenditures, I don't think that's a good idea.
No, Gary, you're not, I speak last. That's the benefit of being the mayor. Actually, you know what, I'll put the pressure on you. I agree with both Deputy Mayor Williams and Counselor Cadell.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a tough decision to make really because we're not really putting the tax, when you look at the tax rates all over the place, going up five, five and a half percent in some, in most areas around. We're probably lower tax rate than I've seen anywhere. But to your point, to, to reduce it even, even further, and we have sales coming in from, from properties that we own. I can't see, I can't see a reason for like 50,000 would be a small amount compared to the amount we should be taking in on the sale of the properties we own, so. I, I think I can go with your point with Mike and Jacques.
Counselor Massey?
Same as Gary, I think, and then we're selling two building that belongs to the taxpayers. So we're here to make decisions on their part. So I'm sure if we can save a point five or a percent, our minus, how small it is, I'm sure people will appreciate an extra 20 buck at the end of the month, at the end of the year, probably. But anyways, it's just that it shows that we're trying to do our part too. So I mean, I agree with Mike and Jeff and Gary.
All right, there it is. That's why we have a democracy. Now, is this where I get to use my super mayor powers? I just called John Torrey, he said I could. Okay, so, uh... 2.28. Okay, do we, uh, there's no resolution, that'll come back to us? Any further questions or comments from anyone? I'd just like to say thank you to Kim and the Treasury Department, Sarah and all the managers for bringing a budget to us that was hard to cut. And I mean, thank you, Jacob, for your huge sacrifice. Yeah, yeah. But no, as counsel, you, you went, we went through this and, you know, we found 8,000 to, to, to cut off of it. So that tells us that you've done a great job on, on the budget. So thanks to everybody and, and thanks to council. I know it's been a long day. It's a five and a half hour day. And if I wasn't getting antsy, you guys shouldn't be getting antsy. So, so anyways, thanks a lot and we have a motion. Counselor Massey? Counselor Cadell? No further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned? 2:25, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, and have a great rest of the weekend.